Welcome, everyone. We're going to call the committee, the whole meeting, to order at 1:00 PM, March 7th, 2024. We respectfully acknowledge that the land in which we gather is the unceded traditional territory of this sequestration. Approve of the agenda, recommendation that the committee of the whole meeting agenda for March 27th, 2024 be approved as circulated. Councillor Bailey, Councillor Beach, all in favor? Carrie? Recommendation that the minutes of the committee of whole meeting held on March 13th, 2024 be adopted. Councillor Evans, Councillor all in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Yeah, I love it.
Hey, delegations, we have Sergeant Marie McNeil from the Sycamore's R.C. giving us an update on bullying, harassment, and threats. Marie, the floor is all yours. Thank you for being here.
I'm just going to speak briefly here to council. I was asked to come down and talk. A lot of, a lot of division about what's going on in the rail trail in town, the discussion over the rail trail. Some of that division has resulted in some social media posts and some people receiving negative comments about their views. And so I talked to a couple of councillors about that. They asked me to come down here and speak publicly, which I'm doing. I haven't got any actual threatening complaints, like any concrete threats that I can investigate. We, please, of course, don't investigate people with bad manners or making rude comments. We have to investigate the actual threats being made. So we haven't had that. But having said that, someone is receiving threats in that nature that they can contact the detachment. If it's printed or whatnot, they can bring down copies of the print, or if it's just a verbal one, then they can tell us the details of it and we can take it from there. There's, yeah, we'll have, we'll have an officer at the April 10th discussion about the rail trail as well. I understand there's going to be a lot of people from the community that want to give their opinion on it, so we'll just have a representative from the officer as well. Not anticipating any issues, but have someone go there. Now, there's also been, now they have the forum here, I might just see the comments. We've had some major, major files here, events in Sycamore's. Over the last little while, we had that homicide at the Best Western just a little, just a little while ago. And of course, we had the one in the summer with the, with the murder of one of the residents out in Soul's Well. And I cannot comment on either investigation. Both investigations are being headed by what we call Southeast District Major Crime, based out of Kelowna. And I can tell, all I can really tell the public, the residents of Sycamore's, is that they are not related. That they're independent events, independent situations, and of course, independent investigations. So, yes, it's definitely unfortunate, it's definitely unsettling that that has occurred. But just to say to everyone that lives here that it's not related. It's not good that it's happened, but certainly not, not related. And yeah, both of them are actively being investigated. What a couple of investigators from Kelowna are in the detachment this afternoon. Stopped and spoke with me, gave me a bit of an update, but again, I can't, I can't share it. Okay?
Thank you very much, Marie. Appreciate it. Okay, so moving right along, we've got the Shoe Shop North Okanagan Rail Trail Construction, Derek and Phil McIntyre-Paul, Derek Sutherland. Welcome, guys. Thanks for being here today.
Thank you, your worship. Happy to be here, happy to be providing a project update on the rail trail to council today. And I'm going to turn right away to Phil McIntyre-Paul, who's been acting as our consultant on this project for, on what, 15 years now? Phil, so Phil has a deep understanding of what's going on with this project and of course, we're into some really exciting topics, so I'll turn it over to Phil.
Thanks, Derek.
Derek, thank you. All right, and some of the council staff and gallery, thanks for this opportunity. Great to have the invitation to come and actually be able to speak to you in person. Because as Derek says, I know there's lots of conversation, lots of energy, but it's exciting. Things are, are happening as, as we all work all together. So my name's Phil McIntyre-Paul, I'm with the Shoe Shop Trail Alliance. I'm currently the senior consultant. And I share that because many of us on council and in this room have worked together for many years, over 20 years, on numerous projects, active transportation and health and community projects throughout the region. But there's a few new faces, and so I just introduced myself and, and provide a little bit of background on the, on the project. And then really what I might put here is the construction update. I provided a brief, I put that together just so that there was, you know, some talking notes and we could be really, really clear on the specifics that are happening. The first part of the brief is very, very high level bullet points to progress up to this point. So and as Derek indicated, I've been working on this for over 15 years now, so since 2009, when the abandonment was, or discontinuation was first, was first raised. In 2015, Splatsheen leadership asked if I would help them pull in all the rest of the leadership in the region back into the route together with them so they could present their vision of what they would like to see happen along the rail corridor. They have managed to acquire two pieces within, or adjacent to and within two, two of their IR sections. And they wanted to see who was interested in working with them collaboratively to actually acquire the rest of the corridor. And then the vision was ambitious. It was, at the time, I know councillor Bushel was part of that. And I know Mary Anderson, you were part of that in your councillor role. And, but everyone put up their hand when, when Chukie and Mipla and the community stood up, so and said, please, see an opportunity to be able to acquire the corridor together, to use that as a way of doing a number of things, most important of which would to build relationships between our communities. Secondly, would be to exercise our, Splatsheen's primary role as, as caretaker in the land and to actually use the corridor to educate the wider community and to actually start to restore the habitat that used to be there by turning it into a greenway that people could walk. And then they were very clear and everyone signed on and said, yeah, we're in. They recognized that would become a massively important economic opportunity for all our communities. And so that was the vision that was placed forward, right now, to year nine, year 10 from those meetings. And good news, despite our wondering whether we could work together and pull it off remarkably, here we are, and in fact, it is happening. Not without funds, and I know that. But I'm here to give you the update on construction progress and where things are at. Since 2015 and then, we, you know, collectively acquired the corridor in 2010 to 2017. So really, the work that you're seeing here is the last number of years since 2018, 2019. So the first part, the first couple of pages speak to the higher level of work that's been done, the development plan, the bi funding. There's a lot more in the background, but we're trying to keep it focused slightly. The past year, the new staff have been working closely with the technical staff for the project, and so they have all the other information. What is in those first two pages is some background on the funding that's been assembled, and that alone is remarkable achievement. The development plan was, was prepared and I thank you yourselves, we typically did it for the Sycamores because you helped make it happen. And I was able to help act as a project manager and put that development plan together. With that plan, we've been able to assemble over $15 million to be able to do work from 0.5 to 1.5, all the way to cloner 42.6, plus the final cloner, the Lance Down Armstrong section on the south. All that's left is raising the funds to get over the highway just north of Armstrong. So remarkably, in, when you look at that nine-year period, we've actually gone from, I wonder if this is even possible, to many people now starting to say, how come it's not done yet? And I don't think any of us thought that that would be the place that we would be at, and here we are. So what does that look like? What I want to do is actually move you forward to pages three and four. And I think for the screen, following the map would be most helpful, there's an overview map. Nice pictures, just so you can see the enderby test section. So here's the overview map, and this is really looking forward from this period now going forward. Last year, the enderby pilot section, the end of Splatsheen area was completed to really allow Splatsheen development crew to perfect the, the technical development of the trail. All of the information is, is very similar to what you've seen in the Okanagan rail trail between Vernon and Kelowna. That was completed in November. You can go and walk it, taste it, touch it, feel it, see the signage and see what it's going to look like. And now, of course, we're, we're able to mobilize. So very top part, if you slide to the next slide, here's this section. And so mobilization began the last, the northern section between cloner 1 and 5 and 4.5, which is, if you slide up a little bit, it's that. There you go, there, that, right there, and then kind of down, so the blue section. And that was utilizing the B.C. Active Transportation grant funding we were able to secure three years ago, or apply for three years ago and secure two years ago. Again, with thanks to the District of Sycamore's and to the CSRD Area E Economic Opportunity Funds. You reviewed the plan and said, yeah, let's do this, put that funding in, and we were able to turn it into now getting this work done. The Splatsheen Development Corporation's, you mentioned, Yip Men Luuk Wu, and they're working on my pronunciation, so bear with me, it'll get better. They're caretakers of the land. Construction team will be constructing the work, doing the construction works based on their successful work last, last fall, or last year on the, on the pilot section. And Urban Systems is providing design tender and the construction engineering services. So for all those, that's professional services moving that forward. District, the District of Sycamore's's recent decision to delay rezoning hasn't delayed construction, it's just meant that it's had to move. So you can see the pink area, cloner 0.5 to 1.5, which was where we were originally going to start construction. That's just been delayed, but construction has begun at 1.5. And access to the northern section, to this section, I know, so some of these bullets are trying to speak to some of the questions I know have been raised. And to be succinct and responsible, this is the most succinct answer. Access to the northern section of the trail will remain closed until it is safe and interim trailhead access is resolved. And that is in large part due to the broom bridge delays, right? So we'll talk about that in a little bit. Currently, all access points have been, have been closed, fenced and signed. So if you go down there, you'll now start to see construction fencing and signage. Construction of the trail will continue as there's many layers to complete. It's not going to just happen in two weeks and suddenly the trail is there. We've got a two-year outlay when you look at the overview map, including erosion and flood mitigation. And this northern section, both the pink and the blue sections, have some significant flood mitigation work to do. We need to raise the surface of the trail by a point or two. So all of that is part of this scheduled work. Correspondence has been sent to all of the adjacent property owners along this section getting worked on, near the construction zones, reminding them that imposing infrastructure structures that could compromise the integrity of the rail trail or interfere with construction, maintenance, and repair of the trail, or with future erosion mitigation works need to be either removed or modified so that the construction can. And additionally, adjacent property owners and the public are being reminded that no construction of new structures, including steps, stairs, retaining walls, removal or disturbance of vegetation or soil is permitted within these rail trail corridor lands unless prior approval. Adjacent property should contact respective, the respective governments, the regional district government. So in this area, CSRD, Splatsheen will contact Splatsheen, and in the southern part, RDNO is the contact there. The final access point, so this question of what, wait a minute, what's the accent? Access, if you look at the development plan, it's always been Sycamore's as the trailhead because we know the value of these trails is when the town center is the place that people come to. And then they go, it's just easier for us to leave our vehicles here and go walking. We don't want people to get in vehicles and leave communities. We want them to actually stick in the community. So it's about creating sticky infrastructure. So that hasn't changed, but the broom bridge delays do mean that it could be two, possibly three years until that's completed before the parallel separated pathway that they've, they've planned to accommodate is, is built and constructed. That's MOTI, Splatsheen, and you'll see the yellow piece, the rail trail, technically, it's purposely moved a half a kilometer south of that in order to stay right out of MOTI, Splatsheen, all the archaeological work and things that are happening there. And it's MOTI who will ultimately come up with the designs to connect all its founding road that then connect to the rail trail. So that's to come. In the interim, there's a ton of work on the ground, trying to figure out if there's any interim access possibility. And I can tell you that there's a number of things underway. And I think the fastest one that we've heard so far, absent, comes from some of the innovative members here in Sycamore's who are saying, what if we did a shovel across the water? And again, would it work? What, what? I don't know. But that's an example of the work that's happening, that's happening. Trail safety, both of them. So that's page three. Page four is a little bit more background about some of the rest of the work. Throughout the course, Splatsheen leadership finalizing the details with the federal government. We were able to help them secure two years ago, and that is substantial grant of an additional $12.1 million. The goal is for that to be activated, possibly as early as next month. Once this, this work is completed, Splatsheen team, their construction team, their hope is that they'll then be able to just keep working on Sycamore's. So at this point, they're working on the plans, they're working on where, you know, where they can start work right there. A number, there's 12 primary erosion sections. Every, every spring that we don't tackle those, this trail gets more expensive, a little bit more of the rail bit. So engineering erosion specialists have to come up with final designs for those. They have to go to environmental review. They likely won't get constructed until next year. So don't get too excited. Keep your bikes looped, keep your boots on and your, go for a walk. But the possibility of walking this whole corridor this season, if it's possible, you may see smaller sections open up similar to the pilot section. But there's a good chance that we're looking at finishing the erosion work next season and then starting to see substantial sections open up again, if it's safe and if there's suitable access. Additional funding is secured, has been secured through B.C. Active Transportation or work on a, on a kilometer section down road into Armstrong. And that's a section which is actually still owned and operated by CP, it's owned by CP Rail and operated by CN Rail, so it's active rail line. So they've created a license allowing a parallel piece of pathway adjacent to the highway. So it's a different type of construction. It's got more work on their subsurfacing, and there is funding to get that done this season as well. So work will be proceeding on that. There's an official opening plan, hopefully, in the spring for the new pilot section. And Splatsheen leadership is working on when they want to hold that, and then they'll be working through the regional districts and all of us to get everyone out there. So watch for that. The Shoe Shop Trail Alliance, there is one little piece of confusion I sometimes get, calling saying, hey, you know that Trail Lines Trail? This is not a Trail Lines Trail. This is an everybody working together trail, which Trail Lines then comes and is able to support the communities. So rail trail owners and champions is the Splatsheen to SecuPAC, working in partnership with RDNO and CSRD as our representatives for all of our communities working together. It, if you think about communities working together, it shouldn't work because we really don't do it a lot if we don't do it well. If you doctor the regional district staffs out often say, it's really hard for the families to work together. You're doing it, and it's impressive. Yes, there's bumps, but the reality is, particularly with Splatsheen leading this thing, it's been a really remarkable privilege to be part of. So all of that is to say, the Trail Lines, when that happens, able to support that. So the Trail Lines continues to offer technical support and provide some administrative and secretarial support. So I am able to go and help make sure minutes are kept and stuff because we're small, we're not large, as you know. And so every ounce of staff time that has to go to any project takes away from other projects. So that's, it's been a privilege to be able to provide that for the last few years. Additional technical support, though, it's not the Trail Lines coming up with all the technical plans. There were at least 12 different sub consultants for the development plan, and there's at least three or four currently active as we speak, and there'll be more to come. Providing engineering, erosion specialty work, environmental oversight. We had the whole geotechnical and rock scaling work that was done last season. That was all completed. So those, those, that kind of work is, is other specialists. Urban Systems continues to be our engineer on record supporting it. And then the Splatsheen Development Corporation and their archaeology team have been providing the primary base for cultural heritage overview and archaeological assessment along with title rights. Just to give you an idea that there's more work to come, a $287,000 grant application was submitted to a whole other, the Pacific Canada Tourism Destination Program. And that leveraged some of the $300,000, $300-plus thousand dollars that local community individuals and businesses have raised to be able to start the landscaping and revegetation of the corridor. We hadn't anticipated that we would be doing that at this point, but that's how close, once the construction's completed, then you can get on with starting to revegetate and make this, make this corridor a vibrant, natural, a green space. And so there's, the enderby section, now that that pilot section is complete, there's an opportunity to actually start doing that work and getting the revegetation done. And it's all indigenous species, Splatsheen land, it's a whole landscape architect design, and it's quite exciting. And there'll be similar designs kind of coming shortly for the whole rest of the quarter. So stay tuned. It's just, you know, that kind of looking ahead. Once, part of that, we included a request for some funding to help us design the highway overpass. Once that design is ready with the last thing, then the rail trail partners, together with everyone, will be able to apply for funding, federal and provincial infrastructure funding to help address that final piece. You've got one little piece left to do there. And then there's more to do, like, who knows, pedestrian bridges between Sycamore's and, like, there's, there's more things to come, right? Like, this is a, it's an opportunity which has possibility built into it. Anyway, that's the overview, that's the construction update. I'll defer any jurisdictional questions to Derek, but in terms of technical questions, happy to try and respond. And I did just check in with Dave and the Splatsheen team earlier today, and their word from them is, we're waiting, you know, because any surprises can delay it. And they said things are going very, very smoothly. They're brushing and rubbing as we speak, and they anticipate having that completed by the end of next week. Probably looking at about two weeks from now, they'll be starting to look at bringing in the subsurface, raising the, putting the basin on that section of the corridor. So, so there, once they can get moving, they're able to move really fast, so. Thank you, Coach Champion. I really appreciate it.
Sure, sure. I just want to start by thanking you for being here today. This has been a long process and it's been a bit contentious and, but I know we're all in agreement, like the CSRD, Nord Spotsing, MLA, who has fought long and hard, MLA Kylo, to get, you know, funding to get this initiative started. So there's a lot of people and a lot of time that have gone into this, so I just, I, I thank you very much. CSRD has showed up more in our district in the last month than they have over the last 10 years that I've sat here. And I just, you know, thank you for your transparency and thank you for being here. And I think that part of this is the new leadership at the CSRD board and the new CAO, who, you know, is, is listening and has made a big difference. And because of that, this council had a ton of questions before this process, while this process was going on. And I think we started with a ton of questions, and I think right now everyone's feeling a bit more comfortable as to what's going on, and some of their questions have been answered. So thank you for that and sharing this with us. I do have a couple of questions, but you know what? What I'll do is I'll let councillor go first, and then I'll ask my question. So go ahead, anyone? Councillor Bushel and Councillor Bailey?
Sure, thank you very much, Phil and Derek, and I want to thank you for coming. I really appreciate it because this is a long time coming, I've been here for a while since last January and January before. And lots of, lots of questions have been answered just with the, with the briefing. Just quick question because it's, it concerns us and it also concerns a lot of the people in the community. Funding, because we're, we, you know, we haven't zoned yet, is the funding at jeopardy because we're not starting at 0.5? Like, we, like, we hope to have it zoned in the next couple of weeks, if we can, but if, is, is the funding go away, like, if we don't have it zoned in a month? Can you speak on that?
Go ahead.
So, yeah, great question, right, of our, if we can get this done. So I, and I made a point of checking with the Splatsheen construction crew on their progress and said, if, if the rezoning is able to go through and then, and then construction is able to happen on that, that upper section, what's your sense in terms of timing it? And certainly through the Splatsheen crew, Gabe's sense is, yeah, once they finish this piece, they could then just go up and, and, and complete that section. Probably, his estimate is probably take about 45 days. Essentially, what's happened is because we've had to bump south, it means that we've also bumped into, or a portion of the work that would have fallen under the Federal Active Transportation Grant. So if, from a timing point of view, if we can get this sorted out, then there is a chance that we can then go, great, we've got a window where we can get that work done within the bigger window of that federal grant. But that's where we're really looking at, you know, this, these two grants, the provincial grants have, this work has to get completed by September. That's, they, they've actually given us an extension to allow this extra year, and they've said, but it needs to be done by September because, keeping extensions. Federal infrastructure grant, they've allowed us to extend to next year so that we can address the erosion. Because that's going to take, it's their delay, their, you know, these environmental assessments take a long time in the federal, so they, they end up, they, they're coming back doing that work. Ideally, from an efficiency point of view, however, it would be good to get that work done now because they're all on site. They're going to be getting, they're going to be doing the same work in this lower section. So it'd be great to do it all kind of simultaneously if they have to come back. We, that's where I can't answer what the additional costs might look like, whether we have to go find some additional funds to accommodate the delay. So, so, so yes, hopeful, possibly some additional funds if we have to come back, you know, in the fall or something.
Go ahead.
Okay, thanks, Phil. And one other question, I didn't, because I just, we just got this last night. Can you, the timing for the 1.5 to 4, what's the timing on that? Like, exactly, roughly, you know, how many months?
It, well, roughly, like, Gabe estimated that by the end of next week, they'll finish prepping and grubbing and doing all of that. And then they'll, they'll start working on the base surfacing, and he thinks that that's probably a two-week piece of work. And so that'll be sort of the first, second, third week of April. By April, the middle of April, April 22nd, I think they want to be surfacing and surfacing north and south. So I just, I don't want to put Gabe on the spot, it would take longer and there may be some other issues. But I know they're working, they'd like to see the project, this piece of work finished by the end of April or as close to. So, and be working, starting to mobilize to move, to move on by that point, April, early May. So, so really from a timing window, we're March, we're at the end of March. I mean, I think you can say April, May is the, is the window to get this work. There's some work that, that they'd like to get on to, and certainly the technical committee would like to see done before the high water freshen happens. And so those plans are getting, the details are getting sort of sorted out as we speak so they can get the approval stating. It's, you know, now we're into the construct, you know, the construction juggle, right, where it's like windows and timing and what can go. That, for this piece, it's, it's going to move quickly now. So, you know, a month, month and a half is, is the best case, and probably two months.
Thank you, Phil.
But still close until the, the access. So don't get all excited and get the bikes ready. It's, you're going to see if there's any signs, not going to happen.
Councillor Bailey?
Yeah, thanks very much, Phil, for being here. This is really, really helpful. And so I just want to preface, any questions I'm asking, it's not politically loaded, it's just actually for information. So I just want to preface that. I know this is a, a lot of people feel passionate either way on this. So I just wanted to pick up on what you were just saying, just for clarity's sake, was the two months or six, six weeks, eight weeks is for the 1.5 to 4.5 section to be completed. And then after that, we would be looking to extend into the north. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
But the goal is to then keep, keep working there. Like, as we speak, we're setting up work on other sections. I think the Rosemont Lake Bridge has to be pedestrianized. For all of those pieces, there's other plans in play as we speak, just getting set up. And it'll be, it'll be in pieces. It won't be linear because certainly, you've got erosion in pieces. So you'll see sections probably further south getting done because it's easier to surface. Because it's easier to surface just in the interim while we're getting out other pieces set up, while the construction management team is set up. If it was possible, we could get the. In that window, I think it would be, I think it would be more cost effective and efficient. But the reality now is we recognize that there's process and it takes, takes time, right? So, so there, there's a certain ability to be flexible as to which pieces get done in what order. But yes, the goal is to be constructing now for the, over the next two years. Because there's a lot of balls, pieces and layers to put together to make this a long corridor. Is that?
Yeah, no, that, that's, that's great. And so when you talk about, sorry. Yeah, when, when you talk about two years, is that the two years to kind of finish this section? Or you talk about the two years to finish the entirety of the rail trail?
Thanks.
Yep, go ahead.
Sure. Yeah. So, so yeah, so we have a two-year window. We have twenty twenty four and then twenty twenty five. For the Federal Active Transportation Funding which Splatine has secured. So they need to get all the work done between cloner, zero over zero point five, all the way to forty two point six. That they can in that window. And that's enough funds to get it completed, all of, all of that completed. With the exception of, of course, waiting for Brumbridge to be finished, because we don't have control over that. That's a whole other, that's finished the transport, finishing that part of the project. And then all we have left is raising the funds for the overpass. And the hope is that we can be applying for that this coming year. So that once that piece of, the, the rest of the work is completed at the end of twenty twenty five. We're in a position that could have been, to have secured funds that in twenty twenty six, work on that overpass can begin. So that's kind of the, the framework at this point. Again, touch wood, because if my experience has told me anything now, since we really got into this, since twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen. Is that there's all sorts of, all sorts of layers and, and, and boxes to check. And so they're doing a great job of making sure those are all in place, but, you know, with the unforeseen question marks. And we have while that delayed some of the work too, right? I mean, but there is, I, what I will say, if I might, is that it's a bulk of the work that needs to be done this season. Because we have funding in place to do that. And when, and two of the grants we have have to be used this season by September. And that's where all the work on this end was scheduled for.
Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Rich and then Counselor Beach.
Through the chair. Thank you. Nice to meet you. I apologize for being late. Mel is not here and I'll apologize for Counselor McCabe. We had a bit of a family emergency, so that's why he's unable to be here and, and I was a little bit late. But good to meet you. What am I, so I'm, honestly, I'm just a bit confused. Is it, so Brumbridge is going to go through, MOTI is going to do that. Zero to zero point five is off limits at this point. And we're not going to be able to know, correct me, because I'm just, this is kind of my synopsis. We don't know what we're doing that. So is that up to that connection piece? Is that snort job to do? That's MOTIs to do? Or we're just going to kind of wait and see to see how that little piece fits in so that we do have access?
The chair, great question. Yeah, the simplest answer is that's MOTI. Where like, no one here has expertise to design a bridge and highways. And they've accommodated, that with, thanks to the community, Sikkamusa's input, Splatine's input and the CSRD and RDNO's input. Was that there has to be separated active transportation accommodation within whatever the design. Final design is for bicycles and pedestrians moving both ways. Which means it has to be at least ten foot wide and it has to be barricaded and separated. So their designs included that. We did get a chance to see those, but then because of the sensitive cultural work that's being done. Their original proposal of, of, then they were going to connect the pathway down and connect it right into the rail. The rail trail at cloner zero, that's having to be revised. So we'll have to wait and see what MOTI comes up with as their revision. But ultimately, Old Soutching Road, the bridge, that's all MOTI. So how it connects to the rail trail, we'll be waiting for MOTIs to sign on that. And that's why it's going to be critical for yourselves, particularly for your staff. Because you're, I think, more likely to be in on those conversations. Like I don't get invited to those meetings. But, but MOTI certainly knows that and it's part of, they know that there's going to be hundreds of people walking across that bridge. So the province has an active transportation mandate, the engineers have to accommodate. It's, it's, it's not even a conversation, but you need to make sure they remember. Once they finish that, there, I'm not going to say there's nothing for us to do because we don't know quite where it's going to connect and how. It may be that they end up modifying Old Soutching Road somehow and then we have to come up with a final connection. So we may have a little bit of work to do, but honestly, it's, we're not talking a lot. We're just talking a few hundred meters, right? If we, if, if anything is left to surface. And so, so I'm, that's the least of my personal worries. They're looking after that. The bigger question I would say now is can we come up with an alternate interim access point on there? And so we can enjoy this pathway, because actually this section, there'll be usable pathway built within a few months. But it may not be accessible to the, to the public for a couple of years depending on the workout. But that's other work to do, right? Let's, let's roll up our sleeves and get on.
Sorry, can I, thank you. Thank you. That explains a lot too. Just a follow-up question. If we do, like if, if zero to, to point zero five never becomes usable. Then do we, is there a way for the, like the, you know, MOTI to connect in? Because there is a lot of, like that's private property. So is there? If, if that, because I mean, there's just a lot, so many ifs, right? So if we go from zero to, we knock that out and just say we're never going to have that. Then how would MOTI connect? Because at that point, we're then at private property, right? There's not an access.
From zero point five north, there's still that, like the only reason we moved to point five was to stay right out. And also to, to give assurance to Splatine that there was no interest in messing around in there because it's too sensitive. And again, Splatine's part of the technical team, so that was a direction coming from Thailand Knights as well. But you, there's, there's room. We've even looked, you know, just interim, to put in a pathway off of Old Soutching Road down. It, you know, within the hundred or two hundred meters north of, of zero point five. So there, there's, there's room, like there's man to work with. The really critical part is right at Brumbridge, cloner zero. And then, and then the rest is sort of, there's, you know, there's been a threat there and stuff. So maybe that there's a pathway down Old Soutching Road and then we drop down. There's lots of room once you get around the bend. And then, and then there's the other conversations as well, like the possibility of pedestrian, all those things, right? So, so those future options are also really, I think, reasonable ones to consider. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't get too anxious about when we figure it out. Part of it is, look at what you've already figured out, right? You've figured out getting twelve jurisdictions in the First Nation Community to work together, collaborate, two regional districts, come on. I mean, with all due respect, you guys are pretty bureaucratic. So like, we're doing it. It's incredible. And your political leadership has been remarkable too. So let's do it. Let's make this happen. So, so we can figure that out. I'm not too anxious. This is technical. It doesn't even have to be on MOTI though, just to make sure that they remember that there's about to be several hundred people walking across. It's not a, it's a non-option now, province. They, they have to understand that people cannot be in roadways. Because we get killed. And they, they were good, but they're just, they got it.
Thank you.
I respond.
And just addressing MOTI, they, they are quite aware because they, they have agreed with the zoning, the rezoning for that. You know, piece there. So they are, they're good with that. Okay. Pam, go ahead.
Through the regard speech. Thank you. Phil, it's so good to have you here today. And, oh, sorry, thank you. I always forget to turn my speaker on. Yeah, so I, most, most of the information is, is come. From you and in your presentation and other questions. But we had a, we had a gathering, a kind of a town chat with council and some questions came up. Last night, I just wanted to clarify, one of them was about the zoning of that. The connection of the zoning to the use. And, and whether or not, and the funk, and the funding, actually. Is there any connection between the Active, BC Active Transit Grant to it having to be zoned in a certain way? That was the question that came up.
Right.
So ahead, thanks.
Sure. A great, great question. I, I, I had heard that that was a question. The simple answer is no, the funding is tied to the construction. The construction is tied to being compliant with all laws and permits and bylaws. And one of them is it has to be approved by Development Services within the jurisdiction. So similar for Enderby Center for the Township Soutching, similar for the CSRD and RDNO. Anything that's constructed like any other construction, it has to go through Development Services. And it has to be reviewed and it has to fit within your OCP. So ultimately. So is it tied to it? Well, the whole construction project is tied to it because it can't, the construction can't happen unless it's zoned. What zoning you choose and stuff, that is, I've been really working hard on to get caught up in zoning. Permits, serious thing, all that stuff, because that, that world of governance, I, my hat's off to you who have offered yourself in service. Because both at the staff and at the political level, it can sometimes be complicated. And I'm just happy that there's teams like yourselves figuring that stuff out. So I'll, I'll leave answering that to yourselves, but hopefully the funding, you know, it's tied to, it has to be compliant with all permits and laws.
Yeah, yeah, that answers. Thank you.
Counselor Beach, feel good? Okay, I just want to clarify a couple of things that I have heard. So I would just want to make sure that. There is a rumor that there is a referendum required for the rail trail to go across IR three. So right now you are at IR three and you are going south. So I'm assuming that rumor is not correct.
That, so it's, thanks for sharing the rumor. It's always fun when you go to a council meeting and get the rumor. I had not heard that. I had heard that question. Someone had said, well, is, has Splatine even approved the, the construction? And it was an ironic question because I heard it last week after I had been chatting with Gabe Neva, who is the Splatine Project Construction Manager. With the Splatine team, and he just sent me pictures of, of the, the signs and they're just prepping at cloner one point five. Which is adjacent to IR three. So, so that's a rumor. Because Splatine is actually building the trail as we speak, like right now their crew is working on.
On IR three.
The one clarification is they own that section and it's actually adjacent to IR three. Just for clarity's sake, they're ma, I, I was trying to speculate, like where did the conversation come? Like there have been conversations, Splatine has been, been like in the conversation on where will we, is what are our interim access options? I know that they looked at awful, creating accommodation within the IR for access. There, the community has been like, like above the rail corridor. They've been clear up to this point that they, at this point in time. They didn't want to impact any of that extra property any further than it already is. But as far as constructing the trail, that's been part of their driving mission all along. And they, they've said, let's do it. Cloners zero, they've asked to stay, stay out of there until that gets sorted out.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you so much. So, and just for clarification, and we've, we've covered a few of these things. I've read the correspondence from the CSRD out to the property owners and it's, it's very well put. And people that you need to contact are listed on there for whatever you need to contact them for. So that's, I was happy to see that and I was happy to see how well they were written and clear. The other thing is, just for clarification, if we don't adopt bylaw one zero four four. How long will it be for clarification? Would it be a year and a half to two years before we get back to Sikkamus? And we lose the funding? Is, just for clarification, that is correct. Correct?
So through the chair, if I think, if I think I'm hearing the question right, is if the, let's, if you delayed and you didn't.
Yep, correct.
Say still false, would there still be time to do the work? Is that another way of saying?
Sure. If, if, if this is delayed and delayed to the point of you're already going south.
There's a certain point where I'm really kind of speculating. Because I don't fully know what the construction plan will look like by the time we get to the fall. What are the final pieces? How much work is left to do with the erosion? By that point, we'll have the erosion, the detailed plans will have heard back from the environmental review. So we'll know if we have more work to do or less work and, and how that will have to structure in the new year into twenty twenty five. So, so there are some things that I really just can't anticipate. But there should be room to also be able to come back and finish that if need be. There, there may be additional costs, however, which we have an account. Now coming back to do piece of work, we don't want to wreck the work because right now we've got to figure out access because the top part's not accessible. There may be more erosion, like, you know, there's, there's some unknowns. We may end up having to go, but there's some additional dollars we have to find to do that. But, but ultimately, you know, twenty twenty five is, I would say they're closed at the window to get it done without having to now go back and find completing new funding. But I can't completely answer that because I don't know the initial cost. And because now it's shifted and so everyone gets bumped to everything. So, so there is time. It's good news. This, and I think from the construction point of view, this is a delay on that one cloner and the north bit. And we're hoping that that can get resolved within the two-year window so we can get it done with the funding.
Yeah, and just, just for clarification, because you're moving from one point five on south. The portion here in Sikkamus, which I think requires, if I remember correctly, just walk in the path or the trail. There's a lot of erosion here. So there is some buildup. So if you start up here, it's probably simpler in construction to do the whole thing. Than have an elevation here and not complete this portion.
That's right. The, the, the section in Sikkamus does have to get raised as well. And until it's raised, you wouldn't have a continuous sort of, you, you, like, we can't surface it before we've raised it. That, that, and that's all part of the, the plan and the budget. So, so yeah, so all of that work needs to be done. And that's why we need this two-year window, right? So we can get all of those bits and pieces done. It's not just the surfacing of the trail.
Okay, thank you. That's, I'm good for now. Go ahead, Counselor Bailey.
Thank you. Yeah, so let me just ask the same question, but a different way with a much shorter timeline. Let's say we have this all resolved by mid-May. And, you know, there's a few issues outstanding. I know we're working through them very actively. And we're going to have another discussion here on the agenda later on today. But, you know, we looked at that mid-May window, we've already kind of said, you've got forty five days. Then it seems to me, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm saying anything that's crazy here, that then we could blend into the next part.
That certainly would be the hope. The one thing that might delay it, and it might end up being blending in, but we do it in the late summer or the fall. Is just high water. Like if it, if high water goes over the top.
Sure.
That part too. And so if it is that high, then we need to wait until it goes down. That certainly is the hope, but I, then I can't speak for the rail trail owners. And also for the, you know, for the development, for the engineering and, and development team working on it. Just because they're also setting up what they're going to do next now as we speak, because they can't delay. Any delay means everything delays, right? It just bumps. So I don't want to preempt what they've already set up to do. If a, you know, it will, it can happen, but it may end up being bumped just because of timing and I just don't know. I don't know directly. Because I think that's, it is.
Yeah, I, I, I just wanted to clarify from my, from my perspective that I'm not thinking the fall. This issue is, is a spring issue to be resolved, not into twenty twenty five or, or even in the fall of twenty twenty four.
That would certainly be my encouragement.
Yeah.
Because what I've seen with this project from the beginning is anytime everyone goes, oh, we've got some time. That's like going, let's just inject and, and let's inject an extra two years on.
No, no, we're, we're, no, we're not. No, no.
People are so busy.
Yeah, no. I thought we were talking about. So through the chair, I think it's important to understand that the ownership group is really hopeful. That the zoning issue will be resolved sooner rather than later. And the sooner it's resolved, the sooner we can make it. The, the problem with delays is that we get further on down the trail and then we have to do a complete reboot. Come back up north to do the construction at the northern part. So that ends up becoming a factor, which may delay the construction further. So the sooner we get the zoning resolved, the better.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just a follow-up on the high water, because I think that's going to be something, well, we'll see. I mean, this year it has been exceptionally dry. So we'll, we'll see if we have that issue this year. Maybe, maybe we don't. But if we do have high water, it's going to affect the entirety of the trail. It might, I don't know, from, from point five to one point five, it's fairly built up. It might get up to that level. I'm not sure. But if. But if, if it does on the lower sections, do you have a plan to kind of work on the other sections and then just circle back around?
I, I can, yeah. Um, yeah, the, the simple answers, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's exactly what, like Splatching Development Corporation, they're working on that right now. They've assessed, what are the pieces we can get working on right away? What are the pieces that need the erosion detailed plans? What are the pieces that if it's high water, we can't do it till fall like so they've, and then they'll, they're trying to get it set up so that they can be as flexible as possible. Given the unknowns, you know, wildfire, flood, mitigation, all of those things. And, and, and yeah, the, the speculation part, it's a weird speculation too. Maybe it'll be dry and then we're going, but we don't want it to be dry because that was part of this. So it's a weird sort of world that we're in and trying to make it. But there's, 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 there's enough work here that there's flexibility.
Thank you, Council Beach. Thank you through the chair.
I feel I, I've. Um, I've, I've been, become more acutely aware of the trail all down along the Okanagan whenever I travel down. Now, since we've been in this position and, and so, you know, I, I look at this project and, and it seems incredibly. Like an incredibly difficult build along the lake so close and so we're um. Affected by water levels and that kind of thing. Are, are there comparable uh, rail trail projects anywhere that have the complexities of. Of right down along the lake like this one, or is it relatively unique?
Yeah, through the chair, um, you know, what I would suggest is rather than like park and actually walk the Okanagan rail trail. Uh, do any of the lake sections, Okanagan, Cal Lake, Wayama Lake, uh, that, that's the comparable project. Yeah, like it, it's the same technical specs, we're using the same engineering. We're, and, and we've actually nailed, in the development plan, I know Council Bushel was part of that process. We save what? A lot of thousands of dollars just by engaging and saying, let's not reinvent the wheel, let's use this. And then we have a test section to apply it. Uh, the difference here is that there's a different level, like we can see up to seven meters of change in elevation. Uh, but, but we're, we're essentially, here the weird part is, it's actually not as technically hard as it seems. The hard part is actually human geography part, uh, and, and all of that, like just us working together, right? Because this is a straight line, it's already built. The railway was already running a great big heavy train on it and they just would go in each season and just shore it up again. It just hasn't been maintained, so we're having to go and go, great, what's the, the, you know, what do we do here? And it will be done to a level to make, to open the pathway so it's open. There will be new erosion issues going forward and it's, and we, we can't do it to the level of, you know, years ago. We're small, we don't have those kinds of money. Uh, and you'll see some of the mitigation work they've done in the Okanagan corridor as well. They, you know, they've done, they said, we've got this much money, this is an important area, let's, let's tackle this. But this area, we can let it erode a bit because people can still walk and that's how this will get managed as well. So technically, ironically, it's a straight line on a, on an existing bed of gravel. So there's actually less work, but that, that's, that's a bit facetious. There is technical things.
Council Bushel.
Thank you, Phil. Through the chair. Um, yeah, just maybe more so some zoning stuff. And we do have, uh, later on in the agenda, we do have zoning on the transportation corridor. But I just wanted to maybe touch base with Derek and I know you're new in that position. Uh, our previous C O E Evan and Charles, uh, and also Ryan were working on, back in twenty twenty or whatever. We're working on uh, bylaws and I, but I don't know where we're at with bylaws. I know North Okanagan Regional District has their own parks bylaw and CSRD has their own parks bylaw. How is a, how is a bylaw, how is a rail trail in, in Sicamous jurisdiction policed and, and, and managed and all that? How, how does that, how does that work? Does that fall under our bylaws or are you responsible for? You know, if somebody has a problem or somebody, let's say a houseboat pulls up on the rail trail and, and starts a fire on the rail trail or whatever, who do they call? Do they call you or do they call the district or we got a reciprocating agreement? Because I, I just, I, I don't know yet. I, I know they were working on it.
Okay, thank you. And I'll ask Phil to fill in the blanks with her, I'm fatal. But uh, through the chair, um, the bylaws are written in the, for the rail trail owner. And uh, and our bylaws apply on the rail trail uh, section. So uh, that's kind of how that works, but Phil, maybe you can give some deeper understanding.
The, the, it's particularly around the maintenance and that's the one thing I realized I didn't put in. I think I put the maintenance plan in here, kind of a reference to that. There's often the man, you can have to go with it. So there's then a part of now the development plan, the long-term maintenance plan and the amenity plan and the basic PC management plan was all part of it. And those apply to the whole corridor. And uh, and, and through the governance advisory, um, those were reviewed and approved and then, and then respectively. Splatching, RDNO and CSRD on behalf of the ownership of the whole corridor said, yes, these are the standards that will hold the trail absolutely. And then as part of that maintenance plan, this is again, the part that still blows my mind a little bit. So is that collectively, Splatching, RDNO and CSRD and all the twelve emergency services have said. Yeah, and we'll share responsibility of looking after this. We'll split it. I think it's forty-six, forty-six and Splatching's eight percent. I think he used sort of ownership formula anyways. So and they said, we'll share the cost for that, so we'll spread it out over like the hundred thousand plus of us who are all saying, let's do this. Which suddenly makes it a reasonable thing. And, and there's an agreement, there's a service agreement, it's just getting finalized that will actually sort of formally. Uh, you know, commit the three partners to taking care of that. Uh, and then my understanding is from those standards, anything above and beyond that, uh, but you know, like City of Andereby may require certain. Thing or Sicamous, that would be negotiated and it would be an additional thing that you would sort of work out. And then there will probably be some cost sharing things that show up. Like I imagine a pedestrian bridge over connecting into the rail corridor while suddenly Sicamous would have. Obviously some maintenance to deal with that and so that would become part of it. I can see going forward. To shape that, but right now you have this maintenance, long-term maintenance, it's detailed, I can tell you. Because again, I got tricked into having to put it together and research it, right? So, um, and it's comprehensive and robust and it has budget projections tied to it and. Projections, so you, you've got that in place and that's, that's the rail trail owners saying, let's do that together. I'll be.
So thanks, Phil, but just to that point, though, we're talking about maintenance and yeah, the maintenance is built in as far as any vandalism or graffiti or things like that. But I'd like to just defer to um, staff, maybe to Nicole right now. And if I understand this correctly, because I mean Sicamous doesn't own mu- a lot of land. So anyone that's in the district of Sicamous would be governed or using our bylaws. So if there's fireworks being shot off on the trail. It would be us that they're calling because those bylaws are our bylaws. So they wouldn't be calling the CSRD, they'd be calling the district Sicamous because those bylaws fall into the district of Sicamous. Nicole, can you just clarify and make sure that I'm?
Through the chair. Yeah, um, that's my understanding. Um, I did make a note that maybe we should check um, whether or not the CSRD and the. Yeah, the regional district bylaws apply to the three properties within the district of Sicamous boundaries. Um, because it would be my uh, understanding that our own bylaws would apply. And the bylaw enforcement officer would be able to go on to those properties as private properties and enforce whatever bylaws.
This, this is where I like.
It's a good question. It is, it happened, we have to know. Yeah, so through the chair, um, so the, the bylaw issue is complex and it's a great question and it's one that um. Is being discussed. We have the bylaws in place. If there's a dog off-leash on the trail, then they are in violation of the CSRD bylaw, the RDNO bylaw. We made our bylaws the same. And uh, and, but then there's the enforcement piece of bringing our bylaw enforcement officers um, into the fold. And making that part of their routine and then stopping challenges and, and the things of that nature come up. Um, so um, it is something that's being actively considered and there is a bylaw in place. Uh, and the RDNO bylaw and the CSRD bylaw mirror each other.
Council Bailey.
Yeah, just in the interest of clarity, since we're on this, this, because I think this is one of the ones that has been a question mark. On the jurisdiction side, once we get down to it and just says, picking up on what Nicole think. I, I think we do need some more detailed clarity on it, like. Or is the CSRD bylaws applying on the land? Because technically it's, it's private property, as you know. Um, private property, but for, for public use, but for all intents and purposes, the, a, a private rezoning in, in, in many ways. So if we have a bylaw, for example, that conflicts with the CSRD bylaw. Which jurisdiction, and I think this is what everyone's kind of getting at, which jurisdiction. Does that fall under and then who enforces it? And I, and, and I don't expect you to have that answer right now and I don't want to put you on the spot. But that's just one of those questions that I think would be helpful to get answered, so. So through the chair, it would be similar to any other private property and I'll go back to the fireworks uh, bylaw. If somebody has flash not fireworks on private property in Sicamous and you have a bylaw against fireworks in Sicamous, then they're in violation of that bylaw. It's no different uh, than on the uh, on the rail trail. Uh, but um, certainly there is a commitment from the ownership group to um, work with our partners on those bylaws. When the trail is going through municipality to make sure that any of those conflicts are addressed. Uh, you know, we try really hard when we're writing these things, we guarantee something's going to come up someday. Uh, that is going to be wonky and we're going to address that. So yeah, in coordination with the partnership group. Uh, but I don't anticipate those issues being really serious or openly contentious.
Thank you, and I think that we would, uh, we would want our bylaws governing that because we are a district that doesn't allow fireworks. So I think that it would be, it would apply to, for us to uh, to, for those bylaws. Council Rich.
Through the chair, sorry Derek, I'm going to bug you again. You keep trying to get in the way. Hi, welcome. Um, thank you for coming up. So I, I have two questions now because with that, so, and I'm just gonna, I love analogies. I'm walking my dog off-leash, someone's super mad at me because my dog jumps on them. Are they calling Sicamous and then Sicamous is calling CSRD and CSRD bylaw is dealing with that? Or Sicamous bylaw guy is now dealing with that?
Yeah, thank you. It's an excellent question through the chair. Um, if it is private property, um, your Sicamous off-leash bylaw would likely only apply to public property. And so our bylaw would then come into effect. In that scenario, I could see that the person would likely call the Sicamous, um, district of Sicamous office and say, I have a bylaw complaint. I got attacked by a dog, the dog was off-leash and it shouldn't have been. And then that's where that relationship comes in where uh, the district of Sicamous bylaw officer contacts our bylaw officer and they got a complaint. And uh, uh, this came in through ours understandably, but we're going to pass well. Uh, so yeah, it would be the CSRD bylaw.
Thank you. Sorry, I had, I have one before that. Okay, go ahead. Um, Phil, um, through the chairs. Um, yeah, you're off the chair. So just so I'm clear, um, we're going to pretend the bridge is not part of the process. Um, what year or month, and I know it's hard to pinpoint it, am I, and there's. They backed it up a little bit so I don't have to worry about the private property access and I can get down to the trail. A little bit before point zero five, when am I going to get myself to Armstrong straight out on the trail?
When will you be able to actually walk or ride?
Yeah, all the way to Armstrong, yeah.
Let's, let's, let's give you a couple of answers so you can. First answer is when it's safe to do so and there's appropriate access. So that really is probably the most succinct at this point in time. Until that's done, until the bridge connects. You can get on the trail, it's not so. But let's say we do find an interim access point in a place that they're reinstated. Um, the hope would be that by the end of two thousand and five, uh, from this end of uh. Where we've been able to build like Clonmer zero point five. Right, Stephanie Croft, Clonmer forty-two, now funding in place by the end of two thousand and twenty-five. To have that, that, that part of the corridor completed. Plus a small one-cloner section from Landstown Road to Armstrong. Which essentially allows people in Township of Fountain and Armstrong to be able to, you know, walk and cycle the back roads without having to end up on the highway. Which is what they're currently having to do. And then we're just left with the overpass. So that is, that is the scenario, just like the timing says here. That's the best, that's our hope plan and it fits with the funding and the, and the process going forward. But again, like you, you've noted, there's all sorts of variables and that's, that's just part of how this works, but.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Council Bushel.
Through the chair, uh, Phil, the test section in interview is just fabulous, um, great to walk on and uh, you know, been down there a few times walking on it, it's really nice. Just uh, and I know you had lots of utilities you had to worry about and things like that because it was right in amongst municipality. Just timing wise, I can't remember how long did that take and just cost wise, ballpark.
Yeah, interesting. I think the budget on that was, uh, now, now you're asking me to, to tell you things without having the information right in front of me. But I think it was like seven. And there was funding, uh, so some sort of federal provincial funding and, and some tourism funding that we're able to leverage. Um, uh, it had some substantial costs though, because it's through the city of Andereby, which has a whole bunch of, of road crossings. Including the bad. And so there's, if you go there now, there's a beautiful crossing, like which everyone is spectacularly happy about. Because Andereby's been wanting that for many, many years and MOTI would never put it on it. They didn't have the funds, but suddenly we had to put it on because suddenly there's a rail trail crossing there. So that was, that alone is a hundred and fifty thousand dollar cost, right, to, to a pedestrian stopping flasher. So, so that's where some of the costs for that section, the surface of the, like the rail surface itself. That Splatching, uh, the development team, they sharpened the pencil and they got it right down. Like I think their surfacing alone, they got it down under eighty bucks a meter kind of thing. Um, so, and they were, that was like, once they started on the surfacing. You know, they kind of got grubbed and prepared, uh, and then boom, suddenly it was done in a couple of weeks. They, so Gabe's estimate is that if they had been allowed to keep going, they probably were moving at about a kilometer a week.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that doesn't account for, you know, they haven't come back and stick in the road lights and it's all permanent and stuff where the erosion works more complex. Bridges, like just basic surfacing, um, and there's fifty kilometers, so. I, when you told me that, it's like fifty weeks and he said, exactly. Like if we, so, okay, then I don't, I've, I've learned not to get my own two, two. But it, it, it once, and now, and you'll see that here too, now they're working, it moves faster than people realize, so.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Council Bailey.
Yeah, thank, this is extremely helpful. I, I already thanked you, but I want to thank you again. Because I think this is giving everyone an opportunity to understand that there's a lot of moving parts to it. Lot of questions that we're still working through, but we're working through it, right? And, and I think that's the takeaway from this moment, at least for me. But I, I do, well, actually it's not, but I just have a question about the MOTI section. Because that's been one of the things that was a big concern to me personally, like as a counselor, when it moved from zero to zero point five. And I think we've gotten some really good answers and we've been working through that as a district as well with MOTI and trying to talk to them. But I, I do want to just be realistic on this piece and, and make sure people truly understand what we're, we're talking about when we are talking about the connection. It's probably four to five years and that's okay. I mean, that's how long it's going to take. It's not going to be two, it's not going to probably be three. The Broom Bridge, when we start, and they told us this, it'll be three years of construction. And then if there's any potential delay, so. I don't know if you've had any discussions with MOTI and I just wanted to, you know, kind of bring up this. This zero point five thing, I think it was already touched on with Council Rich, that there is a way that they can build into zero point five. It, it wasn't zero or bust, which we originally thought that it was. They do have a scenario in which they can get to zero point five.
So, so through the chair, then the, um, the rail trail technical committee was meeting for MOTI Splatching. Uh, is certainly part of the lead on that because it's mostly, you know, so because, because they needed to figure this out. They needed to understand what the, the work was hap- that was happening and how it connects. They also need to use some of the property. Right? Like, you know, so there's the whole set of stuff. Uh, but they have it over the last year and a bit, once the, the archaeology and all the cultural stuff and reworking the science was understood. Because that's written very much uh, with, with Splatching and. Uh, with with splat scene and then our experience in the past was that they were more likely to be working themselves through the district first before they came to us. Because we're kind of the next priority right now, they're trying to resolve making it all come properly, so. So the so the technical committee has not had a chance to reroot yet to see what the the new plans are. Which we take into being that they haven't quite finalized them, but I have heard the construction game, so maybe there is a plan. But we're the the technical committee, when I said we're the technical committee and have the privilege of being able to sit on that, is waiting to see that, so they don't have. Regardless though, my response to others is, yeah, so it could be three and then the five years. Like at some point, I have to retire properly, so and don't wait, but at the same time. If we had done that fifteen years ago, guess where we would be, this wouldn't even be, we would, this wouldn't even be a possibility. So I've come to realize that, yeah, there's delays, we have the funding in place right now to get the construction piece done. And it could kill us and we're all gonna have to just really muscle it together, because we're gonna have constructed trail that we that we can use. And if we don't get it done right now, we managed to get the funding, which is a remarkable feat, like this is not like for. Us on a community level to assemble fifteen million dollars to do something like this in our small communities, like it's the, this is the biggest thing I've ever been. And we got it, we got the funding, so we need to get the work done, we've got two years to to do that, so let's get that work done, and let's not um. Let's not suddenly go, oh yeah, and then suddenly we start delaying while we've managed to pull off just because we don't know that. It's like this really for me seems like a, we're like, yeah, we're on it, we're we're moving. Apparently because it sends the message to MOTI and the others that this really is happening, and that's true for Enderby as well. Like initially, there was a whole conversation going, well, wait a second, they're planning on twinning through Enderby and maybe. The trail's gonna have to move anyway, should we build it, and then the realization was, no, we've gotta build it because now the MOTI has to deal with it. And the community has to benefit while we're waiting, it'd be five, ten years before they do that, so. So that's why looking for an interim trailhead access and thinking about that is important, we should go, okay, well, we'll wait. We should be going, what are the our alternates and to see what's possible and viable, and and that work is happening. Like I said, even within innovative minds in the community, so 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 it's, you know, it's. I know it's not the answer we want to know, at the same time, it doesn't actually change our current construction timelines, we'll need to get that because, hey, we're.
Yeah, just, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's exactly the answer that is absolutely truthful.
Yeah.
It 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 could be at best three years, because that's what MOTI says that, and and they publicly stated that. That the construction period for the Broom Bridge is three years, and that's assuming no delays, and that's when they start the construction. And and I think that's really good information to get out there, so everybody knows that. That's the timelines, right, and and there's no way to make that quicker either, right, it is what it is, and we've had some delays on the Broom Bridge, so. Totally fine, I just want to get that information into people's minds so they have the expectations. I guess the 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 one. Piece, and and I know this is gonna be coming later, is I just wanted to pull that thread a little bit, that once we do this. The MOTI has to do this multi-purpose trail, right? Because I know they were planning on doing the multi-purpose trail from zero, right, that was the original plans. That can't happen now and they're, they're gonna be having discussions with Spotzine about that section of the land and what can be done or. Has to be served and what is uh, looking cultural uh heritage that has to be protected there. And then there is an opportunity to go down Olds Fall Machin Road, but. I guess what I wanna like ask is, what if they come back? And say, no, we can't get into point five, and that's been my greatest worry, I would say.
Through the chair, my my simple response to that is what if, that's why we have to be working on the interim alternate access. Uh, but it's not a reason not to be doing construction, like we've we've done that, we're 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 proceeding here. If we were to speculate and then and then put our put our community plans on hold because of speculation. On a player like MOTI, I'm trying to think of the things we would not have done. Like, we're like, we're not at a place where, like that, for me, I'm now at a point where I just need to get, I I. My commitment is to the people, the communities, the splat scene communities, and 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 to and to and to really try and. Make the most out of the funding that we've been able to raise, and that's, we need to do that, and that has to happen regardless of. All of that other stuff, um, my challenge is that that's where we need you as the leadership. That is the conversation of the hour in terms of Broom Bridge and leadership of staff and the work that's being done is to is to is to be having those conversations, making sure that. Uh, you know, MOTI has the most robust direction possible, um, and that we're all working together to look at the interim options. As if it did come to that, which would be really disappointing, then we then clearly we have some work now to do with MOTI. Uh, and trying to go, well, okay, help us come up with a different solution, but we also have work to do in terms of how we're gonna use this. Remarkable asset, because because I mean, think about it, like, this is completely critical. To the whole corridor, right, it works, I mean, it could be grand rot to Enderby and Enderby's quite silent, going on, it's they're going, well. I'm just building Enderby north until wherever and whoever doesn't want to be in, it's like, yeah, but except if there's nowhere to go. It's not as great a trail, and we know Sycamore's is part of that, and we know Enderby and Armstrong.
So just clarify by, because I, like, yeah, I I maybe I didn't say that in such a clear way, but what I was kind of driving at was. Was not. I guess what it's driving at, it would be unprecedented for them to build that bridge and not connect it in, and and I guess this is, this is where. We don't actually know if they're gonna connect in, but the thought of them not connecting it would almost be absurd. Right, and and I mean, I guess this is, this is one of these other big, big ifs, right, um. I don't know, I I we've certainly had better answers from MOTI, yeah, and I know you don't know.
Yeah, but it's speculation, what's more important is that you're taking every opportunity to make it clear.
Right.
That this is happening and this is what the vision is and that this is what needs to happen, uh, because we we can't really do anything with speculation, I mean, looking at what what. Do I have the. Help support, so.
Yeah, and to and to your point, Phil, and our economic development group that's looking at a solution built for Sycamore's. Because you don't know what's gonna happen, so we can't stop. You know, um, progress because don't know what's gonna happen, but I mean, at this point too, while we're looking at a solution. To connect to the to the west side, we're also gonna look at funding for the Pet Bridge, because that's where the rail trail starts. It starts on Main Street, um, landing and goes across, so I mean, that's still on our radar and that's still. We're gonna look for funding there, because at the end of the day, we all know we're not gonna park cars on the on the west side. We need parking in Sycamore's, we've always said that, I think Daryl and I were talking about parking spaces two years ago, as to where we're gonna put people, we want them in Sycamore's. We want them to go over the Pet Bridge or ferry across, we just want them in our community for economic development, for that. You know, uh, portion which is what this is all about, tourism and thriving community, so I. I agree with you, I don't think we should worry about, let's just see what happens, and our planning department and our staff will continue to work with MOTI. And make sure that, you know what, we're not forgotten in that, but I still think that there's, you know, ways to move forward with this as well, Council Bushel. And Council Rich.
Yep, to the chair, yeah, I just wanted some clarity too, uh, just so I can let everybody know in the gallery, I had a, I had a. Uh, call yesterday from the owner, uh, Jim and Martha Model, they're the first ones that own on the rail trail coming from the Broom Bridge. And supportive of the rail trail and everything, but then they got thinking, they they've heard about the barge, and I think the barge is a great idea too. Um, that they weren't, they just wanna be, everybody's thinking the zero point five is a lift station. Lift station is like zero point seven, some of them somewhere around that, so zero point five is further north, and he was just visioning. You know, you know, if people get, come down the rail trail from Enderby or whatever, they're coming to Sycamore's, they're gonna catch the barge, but the barge is not there. And then people gotta go to the washroom, are we gonna have a like a little for if we if everything works out, would we have a portable washroom there, I'm not sure. Um, they didn't know, because if it, they're the, I know the boat, the the boat idea, they're thinking on going to the lift station. Which is right in front of their place, and they were, they're having visions of the rail trail where people were riding by their places, but not using the washroom out in front of this.
That's gone now, I've got people knocking on my door, they want to use my. So, just, you know, and I know them, you know, you're concerned, just write a letter to Mayor Council, we'll get it off to Phil and.
And the CSRD.
So ultimately, you're what you're.
Yeah, go ahead, Phil.
You're you're talking about the details of a plan, right, so your concept, which is great concept, with the kind, you know how that works now, let's, let's look at this seriously. Well, those are all the details you need to look at with that, that bigger plan, so I can answer all of those, uh, there's possibly, yeah, you do need that, if it's connected on the other side. You've got washing facilities, so you don't, you know, right, so all of that needs to be considered, but that's your design stage, right? Once, once, we've got to know what the options are that we can do, and then we can get into the detailed design or you get it. However, that word is very efficient, but yeah, those are all the questions that will need to be asked and answered around that detailed design, how this works, what will happen. The one thing I will say is that the development plan very purposely. Uh, embraced the adaptive process that the wider Shushrop Regional Trail around it was raised, right, with slash leadership. And that is to say, let's not over engineer based on speculation and and unknown. Let's uh, let's plan to the best information we have on what might be needed and happen, and when we're uncertain. Let's either do something interim to see what happens and or watch what happens, monitor and then adapt and do that, so. Rather than building too many washrooms and now having to look after them in all these places, uh, the recommendation is put them in key access locations. And then monitor if there's a need somewhere else, then you can, you can start to respond and, you know, start with interim, you know, temporary. Amenity and then and then follow up, that way we're not overburdening ourselves with something that's too expensive to look after and was kind of unnecessary, so. In the planning, that detail has to happen and that's part of, you've got that sort of approach, which is really helpful, so.
Thanks, Phil. Council Rich.
Uh, through the chair, Derek, I'm bugging you again, um, I am wondering, has um Snort. Or the CSRD thought about now that we've had to kind of have this big turnaround, because we've lost zero to zero or point zero. Five, um, is there any funding to help us with, you know, like the ferry is actually really super cool, it's a really great idea. Um, but because we've lost that a- access point, have you guys had any discussions of helping Sycamore's get? Get these folks downtown, so they're starting on our side and heading heading over, is has that been in? Because I mean, Enderby and Armstrong, it's running right through the middle of their towns, um, and I'm cheap, so. Can you give us some money?
Through the chair, uh, so the the ferry uh option is. And so no, those conversations haven't happened, but uh, if that became an option that. Was becoming viable, then we'd be looking for funding.
That's awesome, thank you.
All right. Council, any more questions? The uh, the last time we met with uh, Cooby Christian, he was uh, very excited and happy that. Hope and hopeful that we'd be connecting our communities very soon, so, and that was, you know, with the groundbreaking ceremony here in Sycamore's. Um, okay, so no one has any questions, but we do have public input for fifteen minutes at the end, would you guys mind staying, hanging around with us? So that, you're okay with that, okay? Okay, perfect, thank you so much, and we'll we'll keep public input short and sweet, but just in case there's something that we uh. That's burning out there.
Mary Anderson, Council, thank you, Christian.
Phil, thank you very much, yes, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move on to the Okanagan Regional Library Strategic Plan, and we have Danielle Hubbard. And the community librarian Angie Vanderberg here. So take it away.
Thank you, um, is this live, yes, apparently it is.
It is.
Um, so thank you so much, Mayor and Council, for taking the time and what is obviously a very busy agenda that you have today. Um, Angie and I will take probably seven to ten minutes of your time. Um, so my name is Danielle Hubbard, I'm the CEO of the Okanagan Regional Library. Um, what you probably think of is the Sycamore's Library, so the Sycamore's Library is one of our thirty branches. Uh, and so what I'm gonna do over the next couple of minutes here is I'm just gonna tell you a little bit about what the Okanagan Regional Library is. The services that we provide, how it um impacts your community here in Sycamore's. Um, Angie will then tell you about some of the initiatives here on the ground in Sycamore's, um, and if you have. Any questions at the end of that time, we're happy to field those, so um, I've just been the CEO of the O R L, as we call it. For about a year and a half, a little less than a year and a half, actually, so one of the initiatives I'm pursuing. Is to come out and visit all of our member councils this spring, um, mostly by way of introduction. Uh, because I know there's been a lot of turnover at the municipal council level, and again, because I'm quite new and the leader of the organization. And so one of the other initiatives that I have led over the past year and a bit. Is developing a new strategic plan for the Okanagan Regional Library, um, so our mission and our vision now is. For a vital community space for learning, connecting and exploring. There's a lot of discussion at my board level about how to really capture the fact that libraries are providing. A lot of those traditional services of books and reading, um, but then there's so much more than that that we're doing as well. With programming and providing a community space, um, and if I can get the next slide, sorry, I'm not sure who's doing the magic of, okay, great. Um, so our four kind of pillars of our goals as an organization right now. Are to cultivate learning, literacy, creativity and imagination, and again, a lot of those traditional things that people associate with public libraries. Fall under that goal, um, so that's, um, books, magazines, research materials, storytimes. A lot of those mainstays of public libraries, we also offer welcoming inclusive space to gather and connect. Um, the Sycamore's Library is an excellent example of that, that we're very fortunate here in Sycamore's that we share our building facility with City Hall. Um, which is fantastic, so it's local and warm and bright, and I would say very welcoming under the work of Angie and her staff. Um, we embrace local heritage and culture, so, um, again, we have thirty branches, so what that looks like is a little bit different. In each of the communities we serve and each of the spaces that we offer. We develop and nurture community partnerships, um, again, it's really wonderful to be positioned so centrally like we are here in Sycamore's. Um, and a lot of that work falls to our community librarians here on the ground, who of course, here in Sycamore's is Angie. Um, and then one of the other goals of the Okanagan Regional Library that's very valuable to me and the rest of the management team is to strive for organizational service. Excellence, um, and if you'll switch to the next slide, so speaking of organizational excellence. This is a map of all of the locations that the O R L serves, so we are not only one of the largest library systems in B C. We're actually one of the fifty largest library systems in Canada, uh, so we do have. A a rather geographically disparate empire, shall we say, so um. Up the highway from Sycamore's, we also have locations in Rebelstoke and Golden, and then all the way down to the U S border out of Soyuz. Up into the Semilcomine with Headley and Princeton, um, so we provide services to four regional districts. Columbia Shoe Spot, North Okanagan, Central Okanagan and Okanagan Semilcomine. Um, and so for myself as CEO, I report to a board of twenty four elected officials, so there's. Which often elicits a look of startled concern. Um, I would say I'm fortunate that it's a really fantastic supportive board, um, so at the moment, um. Counselor Evans represents Sycamore's on the O R L board, and then there's twenty three other council members that serve on the board. So every few years, that roster of people changes, but I think it's a really important structure. So that that upper level of governance decision making is representative of all the different communities that we serve. And um, there's some definite benefits to being part of a large regional system, um, so. The materials that we offer, this first number here, just under six hundred thousand physical materials. Um, most of those are books, but some of them are also magazines, CDs, DVDs, anything tangible that people can borrow and take home with them. Um, we've also expanded our collection over the past few years to include what we call the Library of Things. So things like a birding kit or magnifying kit or a lot of um, less traditional literacy material. And more diverse forms of literacy, um, and we also provide a very precise number of about. A hundred and forty four thousand, six hundred and fifty exact digitally carried, so it's fluctuating. Um, but those are online resources, so search databases, ebooks, e-audiobooks. Um, things that you can listen to as you go on a walk or when you're out and about, um. And there's the economy of scale too, so our headquarters are in a suburb, the suburbs of Kelowna. Um, that's where I work and my management team, we all have offices there, although we spend a lot of time on the road, obviously. Um, and then this photograph here shows where all of our processing happens. Um, and then this photograph here shows where all of our processing happens. So this is where all of those materials come in, they get cataloged, they get processed. And then they get allocated out to all the different branches. So whichever community you live in, you can borrow materials, you can put materials on hold. That are housed in any of our other locations and you can return them to any of our locations. So the numbers that were on the previous screen, of course, that's a far larger collection than what any one branch of the O R L would be able to hold. So I think that's very much an advantage based on a large regional system. And then, um, because everyone is excited about finances, I'm sure. Uh, so the O R L is governed by a system called the financial allocation model. So in a nutshell, without going into too much detail, um, public libraries in B C are funded through about 80% municipal tax base. About 15% provincial tax base and then about 5% grants and donations and the other little chunks of money. Um, so we, as the O R L, uh, we levy each of the municipalities that we serve. And that levy is calculated based on per capita and on land value. Um, so a community the size of Sicamous, of course, is paying significantly less than Kelowna, which has a far larger population. Um, and then my chief financial officer and I, you know, we take in those levies and then we apportion out our services. Um, proportionate to the size of the community and what their donations are. Or what their levies are. Um, Sicamous is in the really wonderful situation that this, um, Sicamous directly funds. The Tuesday opening hours of the branch here. Um, so Sicamous is contributing to the overall operating of the O R L. And then is also contributing to saying, we'd like to be open a little bit more. And that is always an option for our branches as well. And then I'm at this point, going to turn the podium over to Angie for what is probably the most interesting part of the presentation, which is happening next door at the library.
Thank you, Danielle.
Hello, everybody. I'm Angie Vandenberg, community liver in Sicamous. So I've been at the position for a little over a year. And I'm just going to tell you kind of a few of the programs that we've been doing, um, that seem to be very popular with communities. So we've been doing murder nights and. Everybody loves them. So, and so the busiest one we had had 22 people come out for it, which is, I think, a pretty big deal. Um, you know, it's something to do that anyone can do and it's free and pretty fun. And I'm going to try a teen one coming up in two weeks and I'm really hoping that I can get the teens getting in and being fun. Um, and some useful ones, we just had a, our C M P presented frauds and scam presentation, which was quite well attended as well. And it's, you know, informative and free yet again. And then we've got a few partnerships with, um. So let's see, the Shoe Swap Immigrant Services Society, which does some English lessons, lessons for temporary foreign workers. Um, last is doing cyber seniors, which connects, um, a local volunteer with seniors who would like to be. Better at using their devices or computers and they, they just, um, volunteer and they come and help them out. Um, one that we just had, which was just taken away a little while ago was the Hatchet Chick. That's a big deal for a lot of people in. That come to the library because we get an incubator and then, uh. Enjoy the baby chicks for a week and then give them back. So that's a lot of fun for every age. Um, let's see, art exploration. So the next three months, there's going to be one Saturday a month where. For anyone that wants to come by, we've got, uh, different types of art projects than just for anyone at all free. Um, when, oh, and also opening up the library after hours for the youth community information sessions that Pam has been organizing. So we just want to do as much as we can to include the community and just have everybody using the library that, uh, needs a place to go or. Essentially wants to have something to do.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Counsel, do you have any questions? Counsel Rich.
Through the chair. I just want to say thank you. I am, I'm of the age where the bookmobile used to come to Sicamous every two weeks. And we would stand by kind of a old mini bus and get what we could out of it. So Sicamous has done a really good job. And, and like you said, the Hatchet Chick, the murder mysteries, uh, the robotics for the kids. Um, it just, this, our library really brings our community together and you know, the preschools marching in and out all the time. And we appreciate you and it's, it's really important that we have you here and we'll do our best. But honestly, it's just like all the tweaking on doing like the murder mysteries or, um. It, those kinds of things are really bringing the community together and also making it more, you know, because if you say, oh, let's go to the library, a lot of people. Don't want to do that. But if you've got chicks at the library, then if you want to do that, so appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Evans.
Thank you through the chair, um, Danielle and Angie. Uh, Danielle, since you started being our CEO, you could, I could sense your heart for all the people. That work for the system and you've really built a great team in the last year and a half. And you squeeze a lot out of the budget and I appreciate all that. And I know that even our staff, uh, could be making more money, but you got a heart for the community and that's why you do this. And, um, I just want to say thanks to Angie too, like, uh, for doing things like. Bringing a bunch of kids in and teaching them how to draw and stuff like that. And you keep up that innovative work. So thanks for taking the time to visit us here today. And, uh, shoot us a message if you need something else.
Thank you.
Angie, thank you so much. And Danielle, hats off to you. You're dealing with 25 elected officials like.
Before I stand corrected, yeah.
Patient woman.
You are a, you're an amazingly patient woman. Excellent. Thank you so much for being here today. Counsel Beach.
Thank you through the chair. Just want to, I just want to say thank you to you Danielle and Angie. You know, we're, we're going to start doing these education sessions at the library and. And, you know, going, coming out evenings to do that, like being flexible. In the evenings to, to reach out to the community in a slightly different way. I really appreciate that. And I think it's going to be a great thing. It's a good partnership.
It's really wonderful how involved this council is as well. Angie and I had lunch before coming here and just the fact that. She knows all of you and some of you help run programs at the library is, is so fantastic. So. We're very fortunate to have Sicamous in our, in our little fold of communities. So thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Okay, we're just going to keep moving here. We've got District of Sicamous Development Corporation Quarterly Update. Carly, uh, Tourism and Economic Development Manager. Take it away. Thanks Carly.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. So this is, uh, the first of 24 sub-quarterly updates for you guys. It's been a very busy first, um, 30 months of the year. So I'm going to walk you guys through a couple of the, the finer points here. A really good news story for us as a community. I know it has been very challenging for our businesses and accommodators. Um, with the travel ban that was arbitrarily thrown out last year, causing our summer to be truncated by about three weeks. Um, and then a low snow year, but we did end up in December having a final M R D T total of 135,575 dollars. Um, when, when I say regular, um, money, that is our traditional accommodators, so our hotel hotels. And then O A P is online accommodator providers. So that's our Airbnb's, VRBO's, uh, short-term rentals. So. You can see this split here, we have 97,000 for regular to just over 38,000 for the O A P. Um, our regular increase over 2022 was 4.2%. So, um, dealing with all of the, um. Challenges of COVID, we are starting to see our visitation is gradually growing back into our levels. When we first started collecting M R D T, uh, we've been increasing every year and then our online accommodation increase was 25%. And that's due to start to the short-term rental by law and having people, um. Contribute and sign up for business licenses and making sure that, that they are the, they are collecting the tax. So it puts them on a more level playing field with the tax collected at our regular accommodators. So, uh, we saw a total increase in terms of percentage wise of 9.1% over 2022. Um, I hope to see these strong numbers continue as we get into our, our new tourism seasons. When we look at social media, this is a very cyclical amount of, or, uh, cyclical group of numbers. We do see a, a smaller amount of engagement and audience growth throughout the winter. But we are looking at ways to improve that, um, with our partnerships with Shoe Shop Tourism, Tom's Nock Noggin. Uh, Tourism Association and D B C. So we're investing more in, in quality content production. So that we can be featured more regularly with our, uh, D M Os, our provincial and regional D M Os. Um, we did, um, engage the services of our, one of our tourism advisory committee members, uh, Brad Robach. He is now going to be our content producer. He's a, got a fantastic eye. He shoots, um. Imagery and content, the voice of what Sicamous really encompasses, which is adventure and beauty. And, you know, relaxing all in one lovely picture. So you'll start to see a new direction of our content production. It's very Sicamous focused, but also really embraces the four seasons and the opportunities that we have. So we can start showing people that we truly are that four season destination. Our website still continues to perform really well. We're, um, actively updating it. We're sourcing out new blog contents. Um, our average monthly visits over the last two months have been obviously lower than what summer is with about 604 average monthly visits. And then our page views are about 1200 and that really does go along with the seasonality. It just shows that people are looking for things to do and the pages that they're clicking through are very seasonally specific. So our goal again is to really, uh, grow those, um, shoulder seasons, as we call them. So, uh, the March to July and then October or sorry, September to December. I attended a B C Tourism Industry Conference in Victoria, March 5th to 8th. There was 460 stakeholders from across B C representing all different industries. Um, primarily destination marketing organizations or D M Os. Uh, we had three and a half full days of keynote speakers, workshops, any opportunity to network. So really sharing ideas there. Uh, the great thing about this one is they cater tailored a lot of the workshops and the sessions to rural activation and ways to bolster tourism in rural communities. Whereas in the past, we've seen it more so cater to our larger centers. So, um, I've brought back a lot of really good information to take to our tourism advisory committee. To look at how we're going to build out, um, 25, 26 and 27. So looking at that longer strategic frame, timeframe, sorry. Um, very excited. I'm sure everybody saw my post, but the U C I Pump Truck World Championship Qualifier was approved, uh, been got accepted. So we are hosting Canada's only qualifier, uh, September 7th and 8th. So the main competition day will be the 7th, but I'm working on a plan with, um, key riders to host an amateur. Day, a learn to ride day for both, like from two years old, anybody that can ride a strider all the way up to, you know, whatever age you can still pedal a bike. We're going to utilize the course and the expertise that we have to run, uh, a full day of learn how to, you know, learn how to race. Because the goal is to make this an annual event. So that, uh, our local ridership grows. Uh, we do have contacts with other fellow solutions tracks around, um, our area. And because we are the only qualifier, I'm already getting calls about registration, those details are coming. But all of the information you can find on our qualifier will be on the explore sucamous.ca page and also the U C I, uh, qualifier page. Um, currently we're creating sponsorship packages. We're going to be developing an event committee. We've got our media releases out and then an event production calendar falling works. Another project that we're working on is the B C Bird Trail. So, uh, we signed on to a three-year deal to promote birding, which is an incredibly. A popular sport because it is self-driven. It is free to do, although some of the bird, uh, enthusiasts that I've seen have cameras that are more worth more than my vehicle. So it, um, it's a demographic of, of tourists that will come into town and spend money in town as we build out our birding infrastructure. So right now we've got our two identified spots, which is the Riverfront Nature Trail. And we're looking at an opportunity, I'm working with Thurl to identify two locations where. With the help of birding experts, we're going to create some information plaques and find us a place to strategically locate them. On Riverfront Nature Trail. And then the other place that we've identified has been down at Old Town Bay Marina. So as, um, operations starts to look at trail development in town and I start looking at more grant funding to build more trails. Uh, in the back of our minds, are those, can we align it with our key birding locations so that. Our outpost trail goes from Salmon Arm to Sicamous. So we've got, if you get a chance, go to B C bird trail.ca, look at the Shoe Shop Outpost. It's got information on the 360 species of birds that are found in our area. Um, it shows some, uh, optional itineraries that you can utilize, which, uh, captures some of our unique businesses in town. Um, we do have some social media footnotes are coming and made YouTube content. So you'll be able to follow some, uh. Interesting content from a family perspective of birding and doing tourism, um, amenities within Sicamous. Our visitor guide. So I actually got the final print, um, that is last night. So all we're doing is, is looking for our ideal cover for this year and it will go to print. So it'll be in market after a minor delay. Uh, working on the info kiosk update. So if you haven't seen them, we do have information kiosks at six locations around town, two at the beach park. Two down on Main Street Landing and two on the 97 trail that has maps, events, calendars, et cetera. So we're just, uh, updating those and getting them ready for May long weekend. Um, I'm working actively with the B C 55 games, B C 55 plus games support that's coming to Sicamous September 10th to the 14th. So we're fortunate, we actually have three, um, event locations in town. They'll, they will be drag in though, down at Sicamous Housewives, triathlon at Old Town Bay Marina and hockey within our facility. So, uh, tourism's role is to ensure that all of our accommodators are represented and participants know where to go to book. Really good news, Salmon Arm is sold out for those dates. So now, um, you know, they're pushing, we've been, uh. Rattling all of our accommodators to get their active actual numbers and getting them up to participants. Because, um, I spoke with accommodators between yesterday and even this morning, and they're already starting to get blocks of rooms booked out. So we are going to see an actual significant economic increase, having these events come to our community. With, um, uh, the amount of participants that we, that we should see in those locations. Um, the Rainforest to Rocky story is an iconic campaign launched by Destination B C and we are part of that. It's, uh, the Rainforest to Rocky. So what it is, is they've created a bunch of, of maps for people to, uh. Hit specific locations as they're driving down from the coast all the way into the Rocky Mountains where, um. We are showcasing the Camper to Rebelstone Loop, Rebelstone Loop. Uh, so we're continually pushing and supporting that marketing. We're launching a stay and save in the Shoe Shop program to help our accommodators through our shoulder season to increase the, um, heads and beds. So this is launched in partnership with Shoe Shop Tourism, Salmon Arm Economic Development to support shoulder season visitation. This is funded directly and 100% by M R D T. We'll be having a media release going out on April 10th. But essentially we're marketing and promoting travel to the Shoe Shop, stay and explore to say big on your next vacation. Receive a 20% discount off your hotel room rate when you stay overnight participating accommodators between May 15th and June 15th. And September 15th to October 15th. So again, this is another tourism initiative to help get people to come book your vacation, stay in Sicamous. Marketing assets are being developed to hit the market by April 15th. Um, we've also had a collaboration with Community Future, Salmon Arm Economic Development, Shoe Shop Economic Development, Shoe Shop Tourism. To ensure information is available to support disaster preparedness efforts for our local industry. So we were getting. Ahead of the curve, we have been working with all of these groups since last August to ensure that all of our, um. Business community and tourism industry has the proper information to ensure that they're ready should something happen. So no one wants to think about it, but we don't want to also get caught not, um, being prepared and making sure that our businesses understand where they can get resources and where to go to should they need them. And then the last point is we still have our airport arrivals digital ads that get changed out every month with the latest and greatest content. Encouraging people as they're waiting for their bags to come in and see the beauty of Sicamous. So through the chair, if anybody has questions on tourism, they can ask them now or wait on the economic development side.
Let's just, uh, go ahead. Counsel Bailey.
Yeah, um, thanks Carly. That was great. Just had a question that I wrote down here. Do we, just because. The M R D T numbers, I'm, I'm not surprised by that because I think the overall price per room went up. Do we know the, do we know the, uh, room nights that we did? Because I, I suspect those might, the price might've been up. So we would have collected more M R D T. But I'm, I don't know if we know the room nights. Okay.
We don't, sorry, through the chair. Uh, we don't actually have that information because it is very proprietary to the hotels. So it's not something that, that they're willing to, to give out. I'm still working on trying to encourage them to join that S T R program. But it is costly. It's, you know, it's USD funds. If there's a way that I can, um, figure out a way to maybe subsidize that from tourism funding. If that would give us exactly what we need for that visitation, the, the actual numbers.
Yeah, thanks. That's what I was trying to get at. If we actually got their buy-in for that yet, but okay. Thanks Carly.
Go ahead, Counsel Rich.
Through the chair. Thank you Carly. Always amazing. I'm so excited about the pump track. We need a bike shop now in town because we have the rail trail, the pump track. Someone's going to have to fix bikes or rent them out or something. Um, quick question. Do we do anything with, um. Like hockey and skating. So the, we've, we've got the arena, we've got the partnership with C S R D. Um, I spend, um, too much time with little kids and hockey rigs. We've got four more minor hockey teams coming into Sicamous next year and the skating club's growing. Um, but what I have found is with the tournaments that I've gone to, um. And I had friends actually that came from, their grandkid came from. and I had friends actually that came from, their grandkid came from Cloverdale and another family that came from Kelowna. The teams are all staying in Salmon Arm. So they're like the kind of the big city teams are not staying here in Sycamore's. And I don't know if that's something we can capture with my, if that's a minor hockey thing, if that's a Sycamore's thing. But I mean, the arena is really filling with, we've like had a really good turnout for tournaments this year. But they come and they play and then everybody goes back to Salmon Arm and eats and sleeps. And I don't know if that's something, and I don't know if we can even advertise within the arena with the C S R D and say, hey, you're in Sycamore's. Like go birding, go geocaching, hit the nature trails. Is that something that we do or is that something we could look into?
Through the chair, that's an excellent idea. The extent that I, that tourism sort has been involved is providing geocaching maps and little sort of what to do in Sycamore's while you're here. But I, I didn't realize that they were staying in Salmon Arm. So I think that definitely opens up an opportunity for conversation with minor hockey to figure out, is there a way? As they're creating the hometown tournaments here, the information going out. And that would be an opportunity for me to again, work with our accommodators to perhaps create a tournament package maybe or something. So I will definitely bring that up. I'm going to put that on our agenda for our.
Yeah, that would be awesome because it just, we're, hockey's coming back to Sycamore's. So it's awesome.
It is.
Everybody's good. Thank you so much Carly. I just want to, we're going to go into, okay, the, I just wanted to comment on the Eagle River, the bird watching group. They've been coming up to the marina quite a bit with their cameras and, and taking, that's, it's fun to watch them. I'm personally afraid of birds, but they are super excited about being out there and the whole bird watching community. The other thing is with the bit of the tourism and visit Sycamore's. We've had a lot of, our businesses have been away at shows and they're coming back and going, they're feeling like Sycamore's isn't open for business. Right? So I'm just wondering if there's a way that, and I know this is going to be on the tack meeting next week, but unfortunately I can't be there. But if there's another way to reach out to other communities, Alberta, the provinces and just let them know that, you know what? We're, we're, we're still not smoky because from some of the comments coming back, they still think we're covered in snow or sorry, smoke. So, and snow, not really, right, this year? But anyway, I'm just hoping there's a way that we can reach out and touch on that if at all possible.
So we are working with T O D A and Shoe Shop Tourism to create marketing campaigns. They, they tried doing it last fall against better judgment where they invested this money that the province sort of said, sorry, we, you know, killed your summer with this travel ban. Here's money to advertise that we're still open. And so we actually were, we were able to use our voices to say, stop that investment in this, this funding because you're not going to get back in the first week of September, all the people that canceled last week's notice. So there should be funding left with T O D A driving the, this area is open. So what they're doing now is they're actually creating the graphics so that we can tailor it to our specific regions so that we can utilize that quality content and push it out. There are plans from an explore Sycamore's, we've got some budgets set aside for actual marketing to put out that we are, that we are open. And I'm again, working with Daryl on a really cool project that will support those conversations called real time, hashtag real time. And it's placing a camera on a live feed camera that will look at the lake so that it shows what's happening on a day to day basis. So there's other communities that are getting on board with a very similar project. So once we establish communities and this, this connection, T O D A and Destination B C would love to see more communities doing this so that they can start implementing that. So you're, you know, it's a lot of strict to Sycamore's and, and again, it's smoky or it's blizzarding or whatever's happening. You can look at the camera and say, okay, this is not what we're actually experiencing. We've got these beautiful sunsets, these beautiful views of the lake. We're hoping that we can encourage all of the businesses to share that as well as an avenue to talk to their, their concerned guests that are coming and say, you know.
Yeah.
Because I just, what I've heard is a lot of the businesses felt like they were constantly playing weatherman, trying to dispel this and, you know, reassure people that they should still come. So I'm hoping that's one, I guess two avenues that we'll be able to combat that this year.
Yeah, thank you Carly. And maybe perhaps we could send a booth out with them. You know what? We're very fortunate here in Sycamore's because we are Houseboat Capital Canada and we do have a lot of rental companies. And they go to shows in other provinces and other cities and they are supporting, they're selling their product, but they're also supporting Sycamore's and the shoe shop as well. So we get a lot of benefit from those folks going out. So, but they're giving us some feedback now saying, you know what? Sycamore's, we need to make sure that you're there as well. So in shoe shop. So thank you for that. Council Bailey.
Yeah, just to pick up on that, when you go to Google, I'm, I don't know if there's anything that we can do about this. There's, and it really, really annoys me every single time I see it. There's one of those free filter questions. I don't, Google kind of suggests it and it says, how smoky is Sycamore's right now? Right? And that's one of the things that kind of pops up when you put in Sycamore's. So yeah, it's a thing because that's how, that's based on last year's search history of Google, right? Like people were putting that into Google and that's one of the, you know, one of the suggestions, right? So I don't know if there's anything we can do with it. It was just, just popped in my mind after you mentioned the smoke, that it is something that we're probably going to have to look at because that is a bit of a emerging thing, really, just because of our summers. And yeah, I, I don't have a solution for it, but it'd be nice to, if that didn't pop up on Google as a suggestion of how to Google for Sycamore's.
Through the chair, I'm, I'm going to make a note to ask someone much smarter than myself how we can, if there's a way, I have to sit there and I can have beautiful.
Yeah, right, somebody, I don't know.
Send us all an email. We'll all start typing it in, right?
Totally, totally.
Thank you. Thanks Carly. Do you want to continue?
Okay, excellent. So for economic development, we've had some really good success in the last part of twenty twenty three. So we continued our business support sessions. We had thirty one, thirty one business participants over two sessions. We did a Canva Pro Level Up Your Design Skills one and a Level Up Your Design Skill two session that we hosted at the D O S D C offices. We brought in Trilogy to basically educate businesses on how to use Canva and A I to help automate their, their social media presence, their online presence and really give them the tools so that they didn't have to try and, you know, muddle through it themselves and waste a lot of their precious owner operator time. But also give them the, we got them to create a natural cheat sheet that really helped support our businesses in, into upleveling their presence online. So I did send out a survey and then due to popular response, we are adding an additional workshop session this April twenty third, while boosting small business success through email marketing. So as of last month, when that went down and people started panicking, oh my God, I can't get on Facebook. I can't get on Instagram to reach my business clients because most people have now gone primarily, they've not wanted to invest in a website. So they've gone primarily to social media to increase their presence or even just to build their presence. When that happened, I think it was a real wake up call to businesses that they don't actually own their social media following. So if you have thirty thousand social media followers in the blink of an eye, that can be gone. And how do you promote your business? How do you connect with your customers? So what, it's kind of gone full circle now. Email marketing is back on, you know, the top of everyone's mind because you always own your email marketing list. So we're going to be starting to advertise that Trilogy is going to come back in and do that session. And again, there'll be another poll going out to see what other support sessions are very valuable and needed to our community as these are all completely funded by the dev for our members. They're free to sign up. Each session has space for twenty people, so it's, it's on a first time, first serve signup. Our community profile investment package, I actually, as I was saying, I just got an alert. I have the print ready file, so that'll go on the website and the print copies will be ready. What this is, is this is the long awaited piece that will allow us to send it out when we get development inquiries. It now has all of our statistics and information housed in one area instead of sending them a bunch of links to a bunch of separate pages. The Dev Corp created the Sycamore's Narrows Environmental Enhancement Society or S N E S. S N E S currently has thirty nine participating members and this was born on the topic of the N O I that was issued to the channel development area. So again, we have thirty nine participating members that have properties along the channel. And some of the projects that we've worked on are building out a completed study library. So all the studies that have taken place, basically as far as back as we can get them. And then building a list of active applications to help our businesses understand what has been applied for, where is the money being spent? Is there a way to collaborate on different studies that have been requested? We have meetings that are open to the public and we are shortly going to be creating a membership option so that businesses that would like to get into a lifelong membership with S N E S will be able to have access to the study library that we will be building as members start putting in all of their information. So it's really an opportunity as a community shared resource within this society to help people that are going through the process of applying for any of their section applications that they need to do. Social media and website presence is ongoing, working with developers and entrepreneurs to support property acquisition inquiries and business idea development. So we are still meeting regularly with people that are interested in coming to Sycamore's and finding out the information on, you know, available properties, what they could do on them. It's been great working with Nicole because she is, as soon as we send her, someone else having their answers and their feedback come back is it's such a pleasure working with her. So Nicole, that's been really great. You've been a huge asset for the development corporation in sending people. We have, our directors have been using local businesses to help with challenges, extension opportunities, overall guidance. Our D O S D C director expression of interest application is only open until March thirty first. So we have four board seats, two year terms that are open. So you know, we, we have some applications that have already come in. And then we encourage anybody that's interested in sitting on the development corporation board to submit their application before March thirty first. In terms of advocacy and committee representation, I sit on the Shoe Shop Emergency Recovery Task Force. And we also sit on the subcommittees of Business Professional and Supply Chain Support and Tourism Industry Support. I sit on the Shoe Shop Trails Working Group and the Shoe Shop Workforce Hub Committee, which will be doing our, our workforce hub website application begins April first. And that's essentially encouraging all of our businesses to upload where it's our, it's our shoe shop indeed essentially. So we're really helping to filter out with this partnership work we see. We're helping filter out all of the resumes that really take time out of our owner operators to weed through. And now this is specifically employees that are in the shoe shop, want to work in the shoe shop for employees and employers. So we'll be wrapping up that application campaign right away.
Excellent Carly. Perfect. Thank you so much. Council, any questions? I have a suggestion for a couple of those programs that you're looking for training sessions. You could probably reach out to Roger Petono from the Shoe Shop Community Foundation. And Director Martin and I met with him yesterday and he's got, he's got, he's finding a few more pockets of money. So I think for training and things like that, we should be able to perhaps reach into his pocket for that instead of using ours. So just maybe give him a call on a couple of those things. The, and the Shoe Shop Emergency Recovery Task Force as well. If there's any funding that you might need, Eric, he might be able to help you out with that as well. I'm really, I think we're very fortunate to have created this knees, this knees. It's a really interesting acronym. I think that a lot of our communities on the channel have been struggling with, you know, everyone having to get a Q E P report and everyone having to have a Q E P and everyone having to go, and not knowing the process and waiting for their land tenures because right now we all know that there's a bit of a backup on that. So I think that's brilliant initiative for us to take here in our community to all be part of that so that we can, you know, share our information and everyone can be fully educated as to what's going on. So I think that's awesome. Thank you so much for sharing all your information. Pam, Council Beach.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, Carly, amazing stuff, like really exciting and a lot of, a lot of different work and a lot of education and just really building a strong, strong community. So thank you very much.
Council Evans, I'm sorry, Council Bushel, did you have your hand up? I didn't see you.
Go ahead, Bob.
I was just going to say, I feel like Sycamore's is in the twenty first century now. And every time I go visit my granddaughter in Kelowna, I'm coming back and I see that great sign outside of Entree that says, live more for less. It's just fantastic and makes my day. So keep up the good work.
Council Bushel.
Through the chair, yeah, Carly, thank you very much for everything you're doing. That's, that's great. And I thank you for getting on the, working with the Shoe Shop Trails Working Group. Stepping up there because, yeah, I know wagering and, and Daryl are working hard on the Owl Head Bike Park. And that's, sounds like it's coming to, you know, it's getting close. Takes, takes time to go through government, but no, thanks very much for everything you're doing. Appreciate it.
Thanks Carly. All right, moving right along, we have District Operations Update. Daryl, take it away. Do a little dance out front for all of us or you need the, need the pointer, pointer.
I drew the short straw. Yeah, I thought that might, that might work. I didn't take her Level Up Your Design Skills course, so that's.
Classic Daryl, classic.
That is a classic Daryl, isn't it?
Hey, so just going to touch on some high level things, not going to drill down too far. Today, there's going to be stuff coming to council where I can really drill down and get into some of these projects and some of the things going on. For today, just going to try to get my little remote to work and be halfway there. Is that you?
I don't know.
Okay, so February twenty eighth, we had a meeting and I was asked to investigate costs and location signage related to these muscles. At that time, I shared what we have at the boat launches. It's a variety of fairly similar signs that were supplied by Columbia Shoe Shop and Basin Society, Species Society. These signs came to us for free and it looks like a couple of them could be replaced. They do have some new signage that they're working on. We would have to pay for that. We did talk to them about some of our ideas with the muscular zebra and some different cartoon things that we threw to the partners. They were all not crazy about the idea. This would be new for this year. These are, these are sandwich boards. And what we're looking at now is getting these to the marina. So this is kind of a new thing and that would be donated. We would just coordinate with them to get them to all the marinas. So that's, that's part of the plan. We also spoke in that meeting about some of the parking downtown and we were looking at how will you keep things moving? We don't have people parking for days. We've got lots of construction going on on Main Street and through the core. This is what exists now. We had a snap up last time. So we do have some two hour parking. We've got some red, no parking, got some limited stuff. What I'm proposing on the next screen is that we look at this area here where we've heard that it's a little bit problematic with cars parked overnight or for days and then changing this side of two hundred main to angled parking. Yeah, so you can accommodate more, more units and we still classify that as, as blue. So it would be two hour max. So that should give us a little more parking and eliminate that problem. So we'll carry on with that plan. This thing's really not working. We've thought of a few plans, so there's, there's a lot to talk about in terms of work that's going on behind the scenes. We're doing a lot of research. We've talked to a lot of people. I guess just as far as where we are today, our early conversations with the ministry were that we'd get in the queue and we'll have a pre app meeting with them, we were told and was confirmed on their website. It's a hundred and twenty day process. So September seventh, we initiated that. We got our application in with all the paperwork, all the documentation that required. There's five packages of things that they needed. We got it in. And then starting in January, we started calling for it. We made three requests for updates. Where are we at? So March sixth, we made contact verbally. We're told that the application has just been assigned this morning. That's what I was told. I said, well, how long will that take? Well, that will take a hundred and twenty days. So essentially we've lost a bunch of time, but it is, it is being assigned and it's being looked at. So we're aiming for mid-July to have that pre app meeting that we're hoping to have now, but that's the reality. Meanwhile, at the plant, we are working on Rapid Infiltration Basin Three this year. We're, we're going to skim that one and try to get that one to discharge a little bit quicker. We did one last year and it worked really, really well. We're working, doing a ton of polymer testing to try to get the coagulation to work as, as efficiently as it can. It's our biggest cost and the chemicals have gone way, way up. So we've got like twenty different wagons being tested right now. We're going to try to optimize that, get our chemical costs down. We're also looking at design options for the longer term. There's all kinds of pieces out there. It's a little bit premature to draw. We're also looking at design options for the longer term. There's all kinds of pieces out there. It's a little bit premature to draw anything up. Although we have a good idea of what it's gonna look like, we need to talk to the province, go through that pre-app meeting and find out what the criteria will be for discharge and it will work backwards. So that's where we're at. That, really quickly, just a bunch of things going on, uh, pump check, obviously, uh, Carly's making it pretty clear, we better build it. So they're gonna be coming in May and we'll get started on a couple more trees come down. We're working on a landscape plan. We're gonna have some bleachers. It's gonna, it's gonna be pretty cool. Heating center obviously is underway. We're doing utility tie-ins right now and working with the contractors there. Uh, the Riverside Waterline, uh, we're at the final design. I'm thinking three, three weeks from now, we'll be tendering that out. Owl Head Bike Trail, this has been hanging out with the province forever. And we've been told, I'm gonna say three weeks ago, the section fifty seven has now been assigned. And we're hoping to see something in the next forty days, forty different project days. Uh, Moore Street Lift Station, we're getting all the pieces in place for the generator. We do have our hydro permit, uh, in place and we're gonna bring permanent power there this year. So that's gonna be coordinated with the Riverside job. Uh, sanitary modeling is ongoing, so we will be able to look at areas and see what the impact of more more affluent would be and how we can handle that with other stations. Waterfront dock replacement, we're reviewing codes. We'd like to get that done sooner than later. Uh, transportation master plan, I'm working with Nicole and Jeremy on, on pulling in terms of reference together so we can work with them and get a, a transportation master plan done for Sicamous. And we've got asset management software. We're uploading now. We have that live soon. Uh, just around town, operational news. The guys are cleaning, we're out there washing and brooming and sweeping and landscape repairs are, are going on. Balltime's been groomed. Uh, we're gonna have the bathrooms open in, probably in the next week or two. We're gonna start opening them up. Uh, Sportsfield Maintenance is right around the corner. We've got some banners to change out here soon. The community garden that's on Main Street will be moved to Lions Park. We'll, we'll bring water from the bathroom there and go onto the trail. Uh, the CP Crossing Rehab is scheduled for the end of April. Well, then we're gonna have our little backyard altar going on that weekend. So we'll see if they can adjust that weekend. If not, I think we can probably still make it work. Uh, but I see that the, the overall cost for that came down, which is good. We got a revised quote, so that's good news. And then we're gonna be doing something else that's probably really important. And I, I forget what I put there. I can't see it. Anyway, uh, good news item. We've got lots of projects, as I mentioned, some ours, some, some other projects. There's gonna be a lot of activity around town. It's gonna be a lot of dusty, dirty roads. So how are we gonna do that when we have to get a sweeper to come in from Colona? Every, and travel time and that's Yay. Yeah, so there was a, a deal we couldn't refuse. Uh, we basically bought a bunch of brushes and brooms and they threw a sweeper in for free. Keep this thing burning for a couple of days. It's, it was just that much of a steal. So it's in the yard now and it's running. You know, some of the hydraulics has been redone and, uh, I can't wait to get in it. I feel like, maybe change it all. So that's, yeah, that's it for me.
That's great.
Well, thank you, Daryl. That's awesome. I think for the ten years that I've sat on council, every year I went, Daryl, why can't we buy a sweeper? And ta-da, ten years later, here we go. So I'm pretty excited about that. That'll be, uh, great for all those little cleanup projects too, with all the constructions, we, construction that we have around, around town. I do have one question. It's probably for Carly, um, regarding parking. If we do have some construction parking and I know that Ekdev was working on some parking, is there an opportunity to take that parking and, and use it for construction parking or extra parking that we need? Like, I don't know, I don't know who you were talking to about parking, but I just heard it in one of the presentations. But is there an opportunity to use that parking?
Uh, through the chair, I will bring that to our next week's dev board meeting and we'll look at what our, uh, what the options are that we have been speaking about.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions for Daryl? Counsel Bailey.
Yeah, just one thing that I don't think's on your list, but I assume you're working on because Kelly said four twenty-five is gonna be coming to the development committee. So are, you're gonna be working on the tie-ins with that and so, okay, all right. Just checking, you bet.
Counsel Evans.
Daryl, through the chair, um, which road are we paving this, this summer? So we have allocated, uh, an amount of money to go do a road. I've got four on my list right now. And if I wasn't in this meeting today, I would be out with, with, uh, with the crew, picking the road. So I, yeah, I've got, yeah. Um, we got, we got four we have to assess. I'll take the worst one.
Um, the CP Crossing?
Yes.
The, how much has the cost come down on that? Cause I think the last meeting we had, I think it was sitting at around a hundred and thirty thousand. They had brought it down from one eighty. One sixty, was it one sixty?
One sixty.
They brought it down to about one thirty-three, I think. Um, they're gonna be covering the cost of the materials.
Okay, well, that's, that's good that.
And we, just through the chair, we've made the point that the allocation they've put in that estimate for equipment is very generous and we're hoping to realize significant savings on that. I'm hoping it's, I'm hoping it's quite a bit lower.
Okay, no, that sounds good. And, um, yeah, I think that's good. Any other questions for Daryl? Daryl, thank you so much. Great job. Thanks for everything you do and all the, and keeping us organized. The streets look great. Thank you.
Coming.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, modular accommodations usage. Daryl, you have the floor again.
Okay. Okay, so as you know, um, recent years, the Eagles have been renting out the modular accommodation unit with the Eagles Nest for a while there. Uh, they'll be discontinuing, discontinuing that, uh, as you know that as well. Going forward, I guess staff is looking for direction. Uh, I've been approached by a group that would like to rent that long term. And I think, you know, before I even think of entertaining that, I bring that to council and obviously this could have a bit of a rec impact or this could have, uh, you know, a positive housing impact for construction workers in town or, like, there's, there's different implications if we want to rent it out long term. The person, the party that's contacted me was suggesting that, um, they would manage it and have it for housing for construction workers that are working locally. And want a fairly significant amount of time, uh, a longer term.
Okay, counsel, do you have any comments? Counsel Rich.
Yeah, and just through the chair, and I don't know anything about it. Would they carry their own insurance on that? So if they crashed it?
If they, if they wanted content insurance, they would have to do that. We would still carry the insurance as it's, it would be ours.
Right.
Yeah.
Sounds like a great idea.
Counsel Bushel.
Yeah, through the chair, that's been fortunate about the Eagles. Um, I guess volunteer burnout is the biggest, you know, uh, culprit of the whole thing. Uh, you can only, two people can only feed so many kids for so long and they kind of get burnt out. But anyways, that's, uh, it's there for the money-making and, uh, you know, I think if we talk to, uh, our rec center and, and have a good chat with them before we go and commit to, uh, any big group. Um, I think it's, you know, we have a lot of, uh, development proposals that are coming forward and they all need accommodation. Um, we see, uh, the seniors games in the fall too. You know, I, I don't know if, if they would go, are they gonna go year round, long term?
Uh, well, it's certainly to say, the group that approached me wa- wanted for multiple years.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, good to know. I guess we'll hear their details sooner than later.
Counsel Bailey.
Yeah, thanks. I, I'd be supportive of that. I, we paid off the mortgage this year to, you know, reduce our interest costs a little bit, but we should be looking at how we do a full cost recovery on that. Um, I know it's paid off, but we should be trying to maximize the revenue on that to have that all come back to the district. So at the end of the day, that didn't cost taxpayers any money. I think that was the, the goal in the first place. And I think it sounds like you have some pretty good interests. So that, that'd be interesting to see what they're thinking and what we can actually get out of it as well. So, yeah.
Go ahead, Daryl.
Just say through the chair, you know, if we, if we go that way, obviously, there's a bit of a process that has to be followed. Uh, I think, I don't know, section sixty-two of the charter would, would require us to, to do a, a public So I guess I'm just looking for direction. If you wanna go down that road, we can get that started.
So I guess, should we look at doing an expression of interest to see if there's interest in other folks renting it? Like, we should probably put it out there as opposed to just awarding it or just go ahead, Sarah.
Uh, through the chair. So, uh, staff had spoken about this and it's, yeah, under section twenty-six, um, about disposal of, uh, property, which is considered a lease as well under the charter. Uh, so we can simply put out a notice and accept, um, you know, interested parties to submit, um, their interest and, and go from there. So it, it doesn't have to be an expression, like a full-blown, like, it's gonna be very simplified, but just that we're putting it out to the public and that we can accept um, proposals from anyone that's interested. Yeah.
Okay, no, it sounds good. Counsel Bushel.
Yeah, through the chair, Daryl, um, you know, it's been in use for a few years. Would you, uh, have you done a, just like an overall cursory of the maintenance of wear and tear and what needs to be done to, you know, to, you know, put it forward for leasing or a long-term rental?
Yeah, so we've done a recent, uh, walkthrough, follow-up inspection af- after the last group has left and we've, we've done our repairs.
Okay.
We do have a breakdown of what we've spent each year on it. And, and so it's, it's not a terrible amount of money, but there's, there's some. So, yeah, we, we would have to weigh that all out. And I think if, you know, if we could get some some commitments or some, some groups that were really serious about this, we could kind of look at it like an RFP kind of thing.
Yeah.
Maybe without formalizing that, just say, you know, this is kind of what we generate and counsel could decide what the best deal would look like.
Perhaps we should look out, uh, look at, um, our businesses as well because staff accommodations has been a little bit tough. So maybe we round up all of our, our business community and see if there's any they want to take to, like, there's probably several things that we could do to businesses in the community as well. So, um, yeah, that might be another option. Counsel Bailey.
Yeah, I like the idea with the RFP is that you set it out, here's what's available. What's the appetite? How much money? And let's, whatever we could do to maximize, I think the income stream from it is kind of what I'm personally thinking. I mean, for staff accommodation, it's a little tricky because there's a lot of communal stuff in there and I you know, it might appeal to some businesses, but, um, I think overall the overall package is probably what we have to realistically market to somebody that would take on is a year or two years or whatever it is, right? But I kind of like your idea of doing an RFP and then seeing what we get, so.
For sure. But we should reach out to our businesses and see if there is.
They can be part of the RFP.
Yeah, for sure. Cause some of them might just take the whole thing, you know, like you never know, right?
And they could put the RFP, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Um, Daryl, anything else?
Uh, no, nothing. Just I'm kind of hearing that staff can proceed with a bit of a plan and we'll, we'll explore this.
Yep, sounds great. Thank you so much. Okay, planning and development committee, terms of reference. Nicole, take it away.
Okay, through the chair. Just hoping we can pull up the terms of reference for the planning and development committee. So hopefully you had a chance to take a peek at the staff report and the terms of reference, um, we did at the last PDC on March twentieth. And, um, it looks like we probably want to do some revisions to it. And most importantly, it says that uh, we currently meet every second and fourth Wednesday of every month at one PM. And that's of course today. And we haven't been doing that, I think, well, since I've been here and probably previous to that. So our proposal is to meet, um, every third Wednesday of the month. So that's a change coming from the PDC, uh, just opening it up to the committee of the whole. If there's anything else in the rest of the terms of reference or in terms of scheduling that you would want to have implemented. And then we can bring it back to council at a regular meeting, uh, for endorsement.
Hey, thank you. Comments? Counsel Bailey.
Yeah, I think what we found is that if we, some, some meetings were super, um, quick, right? Like twenty minutes or twenty-five minutes. And then once a month would probably end up being a regular sized meeting, like ninety minutes or so. So that's, that was the rationale, um, behind, behind that, just to give a little context.
Okay. Counsel Bushel.
Yeah, through the chair. Yeah, we looked at this with Scott, uh, before Scott left too and, uh, because it had to be updated and we were meeting at the wrong times and the wrong, wrong dates. So uh, thanks very much for picking it up, Nicole. And yeah, we'll, uh, I, I agree, it has to be updated and true.
Okay. Is there anything you'd like from us, Nicole?
Uh, no, through the chair. So what I'll do is I'll make the revisions as proposed, um, changing it to once a month. That doesn't mean that we can't, um, pull a special meeting and accommodate any developments that need a streamlined uh, review process, but I'll make the change and then it'll come back to council.
Perfect. Thanks, Nicole. Okay, twenty twenty-four communications training with Jen and Sarah.
Through the chair, uh, don't have much to say about this. There's the staff report. Uh, just wanting direction as to whether there's interest from council to participate in communications training um, along with other member municipalities of the regional district and the CSRD. We attempted to arrange last year, um, and didn't get a huge uptake. Wanting to look at it again as it's still relevant. I know that staff will be participating, but it's really just to, um, to advise the CSRD um, and their communications with Jen and if, if Sicamous Council is interested.
Counsel Evans. And Counsel Beach.
Thank you through the chair. I, I was very interested in this when I read this. I thought it would be a good idea for us to learn how to just get good at this better and better. So I'm, I'm, I'm game if it's there's an interest from a council.
Counsel Beach.
Yeah, me too. I, I would definitely could use this.
I'm game. Counsel Bailey.
Oh, it, I, this is just communications training that, that they've done with CSRD. I mean, I've been through several of them. I'm, is this a whole group thing that we're trying to do or is it just kind of in, individual counselors can?
Uh, sorry, through the chair. My understanding is that, uh, it would be participatory, like everyone would be participating, but let me find the details.
Okay.
And I mean, we're gonna share the cost. The idea is to share the cost of having the consultant come um, and looking at, you know, social media and as well as, uh, you know, working with the press and, um, the idea is around October to host the training.
October.
In the fall. When it's not so busy.
Counsel Bushel.
We have, by all means, I'm, I'm.
Counsel Rich, yep. Okay, well, let's get more deets and put a date in. Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
Okay, transportation corridor zoning. Counsel Bushel, do you want to take this away?
Thank you through the chair. Um, yeah, I, I started to do some homework and, uh, we, uh, you know, we've been working on this rail trail for quite a while and, um, it was kind of between, uh, Charles and Evan were working on some zoning and they were working on, um, uh, quite a bit for a while. And then Evan had left and then we ended, Scott started working on it. Scott, uh, Beachen, our planner. And, uh, not sure how par, P three was picked, uh, picked, like the park was picked, whether it was, you know, from the CSRD or from our staff, not sure. Um, even P three, if you look at P three park, um, principal use doesn't even include a rail trail, but we could, you know, we could, we could revise it. Uh, accessory uses don't have, uh, things like washrooms or, or rail trail on it, but it could be revised. But I started looking at Interby and, uh, I called Brian Schneider, one of our counselors down there, friends, uh, one of our friends. And he had indicated his was actually, um, a, a transportation corridor. And, uh, and little, lo and behold, I looked at our OCP and our OCP calls it a transportation corridor as well. And it refers to uh, the west side of the channel as a transportation corridor. And that, you know, um, we are to provide or consult with our local, uh, First Nations team and and, uh, provide, discuss, uh, services. And, uh, when we had the open house here, um, I did, uh, speak with, uh, Mike and he indicated that they were very interested in, in utilities. So I did some more homework and, um, I ended up touching base with our old planner, Mike Mars. And Mike was our old planner from years and years. And, uh, um, between the time Mike left And, uh, um, between the time Mike left and where we are today, I think we've kind of forgot about the, uh, the utility corridor that that was planned from the planning department back then. And back then, they had actually taken, uh, uh, easements from property owners on the rail trail to actually have, uh, their sewage come down to the rail trail. So it was planned on some time ago. So what else? We did talk to the CSRD about statutory right-of-way or utility corridor. And, um, so, you know, and that's kind of where we are today. And our our O C P supports supports it as a, as a transportation corridor. And also, it also supports services to the, uh, end of our district boundary, which would help help facilitate Splatzen if they ever did develop. And, uh, I have seen some of the development, uh, proposals, uh, from, uh, Splatzen for that, uh, I R three. And, uh, there's a lot of changes that may that we need to clear there. So, um, it would be wise that we do at least put it on title so that in the future, uh, we, you know, we we work together with our partners. So that's how it kind of all became. And and we didn't, I I I, I mean, I didn't, we didn't want to say no to the rail trail myself. I my 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 thing about the rail trail was, let's get it right the first time and not, you know, try to have to redo it in a year or two. And, uh, you know, I guess if you read your O C P and you and you follow it like a Bible, um, which we haven't done, um, we would have actually picked that out a long time ago. That it is actually a transportation corridor and we could have actually created a new bylaw instead of bylaw ten forty P M. Could have created a separate bylaw just for the rail trail and it could have been done a while ago. But with staff, you know, turn over staff in our planning department, that's where we are today. So my hope is that, uh, on April tenth, however we get there, um, and if we have enough time to, even if it's, you know, we can rezone it to a tra- a transportation corridor, that's up to council, um, and staff, um, hopefully we can get there by April tenth. And, uh, it's not a lot of time. Um, I, I mean, I even foresee, you know, to save save the rail trail from starting at zero point five, even if we did a a temporary use permit and applied for it ourselves and and gave it to our, you know, gave it to the CSRD just so we could get them to go to zero point five so that the barge, if they want, the the crew wants to start a barge, that would work too. And at least it would all be done now. So I just wanted to start the discussion. We don't have a lot of time between April now and April tenth, but when we go to April tenth, it would be nice that we're all unified and we know where we're going. So that's my my conversation.
Thank you. I'm going to actually defer to Nicole on this because I do feel that, um, our, um, rail trail or our P three zone does address all of the concerns for the rail trail. I think if this council wants to rezone it, I mean, this came to council in July of twenty twenty-three and we went, yes, uh, let's take it. This came to the planning committee, actually, in July. And the planning committee went, yep, let's move this forward. So knowing it was, yeah, you did. You sent it to council and we voted on it in July. Yeah, so, um, the P three was, has been moved forward, but the pre P P three does address basically everything that that you're talking about, Counselor Bushel. So even if we don't rezone it by April the tenth, it's a, it's a park. It's not a dedicated park. We can go back a month after we rezone. And we can create a zone for the P three that we feel is, um, uh, more useful for the District of Sycamore. It's like, I know that Enderby's has a, a zone for a highway. Well, we're a nature path, so that's not going to really apply to us. We're one point five kilometers, one kilometer. And, uh, you know, and outbuildings, again, we're a nature path, so that shouldn't apply. So I guess everything that we're asking for is already included in this, but maybe we should look at stuff that is all about our community. And us as a community create a zone. Snowshoeing, um, cross-country skiing, how would that look? So I think there's a better plan later on for us to sit down and take some time and make it what we want to make it. But just to address your concerns, Gord, I think it is zoned for what we want to move forward with. Nicole, do you want to?
Yeah, through the chair. Um, I would say the P three zone is is the, like, the only zone that currently fits best with the rail trail. Um, I know it's, it is actually quite generous. There's some interesting uh, uses that are allowed in the P three zone. Um, and there's also the general regulations that allow a bunch of other things, including utilities. So if a statutory right-of-way is something that the District of Sycamore is interested in, that does, um, it is a permitted use already. Um, I can see what you're saying is that you would propose, um, Mayor Anderson, that just gonna throw this out here. So if if one ten forty-four was adopted as P three and then shortly after we create another zone, transportation corridor zone, um, and then adopt, and then I guess rezone the P three to that, because that would be probably the fastest way to allow the trail to be constructed. It's a possibility that way. Yeah. Um, I guess if if ten forty-four isn't successful, we can still create a transportation specific zone. It might be a bit of a bit of a leg there, um, because you don't have that P three in place to allow the trail to be constructed. Um, they're all options.
Counselor Rich, go ahead.
Uh, through the chair. Yeah, I mean, I I think one of the big three things for me is we need to, you know, and we've got so many great answers today. Again, Phil and Derek and Rhonda, thank you so much for coming and speaking to us. Um, I I think what we need to do is look at what we need to, you know, if 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 the zoning needs to change a bit to get that vote through, to get this trail going and get the funding going, we absolutely need to come together as a council and what that looks like. So you know, i- i- if P three and, and you know, there's these little worryments or a transportation corridor, if we have to have an emergency meeting to get a different zoning done and this needs to go into the paper tomorrow and we all have to meet tomorrow morning at five A M. And it needs to be a transportation corner to get us to that boat and get our trail and get our money going. Then then let's do that. Let's not get stuck on, you know, um, minor details. Let's all work together and 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 get the zoning done. And I mean, I agree with Gord. I would rather get the zoning done properly the first time and then not keep just going back. I think that is one of the issues with this trail, um, for me personally, that it's been, and I'm new, so I'm, I I don't have ten years of history. But but when you go back and look at the trail and all the different things, budgets have changed, who got what, what Enderby's doing and what Armstrong's doing and all these different things, it's, it's just been, i- it's really hard to follow. It could be its own, like, horror movie. Um, so I really think that that us as counselors just need to, um, get this zoning done. And if i- if it's P three or transportation quarter, what makes us comfortable? So that we can reach out to Snort and say, okay, we're done. Let's let's get her going.
Okay, thank you. And to, um, our planner's point, though, where the zoning is is probably the best right now is a P three to get it moving. So and then, like I said, if afterwards we want to make some changes, that's probably, uh, you know, if we're gonna have to stop the process some, at some point, either we stop the process before or we stop the process after, like, we're gonna have to make some a stop somewhere for another public hearing in all of this. But if we're gonna do it, my suggestion is we put the P three zoning through and then as a community, we have a public hearing and see what we want to zone that for. Counselor Beach?
Yeah, through the chair. I I, you know, have gone back again and looked at P three and I I missed, I didn't think that we could put utilities in under P three. So that's good. Like, that was one of the things I was, I was concerned about. Um, but I I really kind of looked at that and and I don't know, I just feel that the sort of the ability for us to protect and manage and everything under P three was definitely delineated well in in that bylaw. So yeah, I would be in favor of going that route if it means we can move it faster um, forward. And then we'll, we'll have to keep looking at it, I guess. We haven't got a zone, a zoning bylaw, um, fully through for transportation corridors, so.
And to the utility point, need to be very careful because where, sorry, Nicole, where are the utilities on the west side?
Yeah, you could probably, uh, bring it up on the mass.
Like, they're already in.
Yeah, it's in, it's in the road dedication for Oldsfall.
So how, so it's it would be fairly close to a proposed utility running along the trail. But the proposed utility running along the trail would also trigger an archaeology study. So we need to be very, very careful there because once we dig in there, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars to the taxpayers in Sycamore. So and that's, that's a fact because two hundred Maine was, I don't, can't remember off the top of my head. It was three hundred thousand for ARC study, so that's kind of the direction we we we'd be looking at when we already have the services. And they do run out to I R three, is that correct?
Yeah.
Do they, could, if I R three expressed interest in connecting to our services here in Sycamore, does it connect there?
Looks like it stopped short and then, yeah, we could work with.
We could work with that. Okay. Counselor Bailey, I'm sorry, then, Counselor Beach.
Yeah, I mean, what I'd like to see is that, and I, I've said this numerous times, is that we all come together and we see unanimous vote. And it's excuse me? Like, yeah, that it's actually a unanimous vote. We we move this forward. Um, no, that's really good information. So just with a a question about what the existing utilities look like. Um, do you know, Daryl, like, is it, are we talking about, is that a fairly low level? Like, would we have to do significant upgrades if there was another big project, say, an I R three? Or is that, was that kind of designed just for some single-family homes? And is it under, actually, under the road? So to, for us to get at it, we'd have to dig up the road and everything?
Yeah, it it is on the edge of the road, for sure.
So that that would be a significant expense, you know? So either way, whatever, I mean, sometimes a utility corridor would be, could be cheaper, digging up the whole road and then getting to the utilities and putting new ones down. It just depends how we want to kind of do it. I I agree that the utilities and having those utilities get to I R three, eh, that's a pretty important thing. So whether we can and maybe that's something we can take a look at.
Yeah, through the chair, I I have no doubt from the road we could get to I R three.
Okay.
It's just, yeah, it's just a different way there.
Yeah.
And and I just have a question for staff.
Okay.
So P three, this has been a lot of discussion around this, it's not dedicated park, right? Like, okay. So that zoning can be changed later and we don't need to go and swap land out and do all sorts. Okay, good.
Counselor Beach?
Um, yeah, I just, um, yeah, I just wanted to sort of, uh, point out that, um, you know, an easement, okay, I mean, it doesn't mean that we 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 have an easement for the utilities, doesn't necessarily mean that we have to develop it, right? So, but it, but it's there. It's a corridor that we've we've assigned and we know we have it if we need. Doesn't cost anything extra, does it?
Yeah. Nope.
Okay.
And the, but to that point, it would probably be less expensive to dig up some road than do an ARC study. I'm just, because.
Yeah, I I I see where you're going with that, absolutely. Yeah.
Counselor Bushel and then Counselor Rich?
Yeah, through the chair, we did meet with, uh, with, uh, previous council of the council. And this was about two, two terms ago. And the road, the road is not where the road is today. Road, well, and it was, I mean, there's, there's big changes if Splatzen does go ahead with the I R three. So, you know, you could really, you know, the road won't be where it is. It it could change. So, you know, as everything runs downhill, um, the utilities would be, they would want them on the bottom of the, on the bottom as well. So basically, like I say, I I I myself, as long as we get to someplace by April tenth, um, and I just was gonna ask, Nicole, how long does it take to go through a process to actually start a, to start a new zone?
Through the chair. I mean, we just did it for our VP four, um, and that started, I would say, late September and it was just adopted last month.
Yeah, that was a really, really complicated one with about three different resorts involved. I mean, this is something fairly fairly straightforward to just rezone or make an, make an additional zone. How long do you think it would take? You know, because I I think everybody, maybe, maybe not everybody's in in favor of going to a transportation corridor. But our O C P does call it a transportation corridor and we should follow our O C P.
Yeah, through the chair. Through the chair, I just want, uh, noting through the O C P, it is, it is named transportation corridor, but it is slated for the future use of rail trail. So and we, I know that council has been wanting to update the O C P as well. So I guess it really depends as to what council wants to see the future use as. You know, as the P three zone stands now, it's, it's to be used as a trail, right, in Zone Park, which was, you know, supported by the CSRD and went through the referral process at zoning bylaw one thousand. Um, initially zoned as P three park on first reading. Um, so really, I guess it is a question as to what the future use, um, council wants it to be. Transportation corridor, the the zoning in Enderby, it includes highway and it includes railway. So I think that, you know, Nicole had mentioned that through the general guidelines that, you know, public utility is permitted, utility is permitted, um, alternate structures is permitted, that we think that could maybe alleviate some of the concerns that the use P three parks and allow it. It does. It's just through the general regulations, which applies to all zones. Um, but at the end of the day, it's, it's the will of council, so.
And, uh, just to add to that, um, the zone P three is still allows, um, docks. So the use of docks is still allowed with the, um, uh, permission of the upland owner. So, Nicole, go ahead.
I just wanted to address, um, timing. So we could create the zone. It would go to the Planning and Development Committee. Then probably first and second at council. I'm assuming we'd have to do the public hearing for it. And then third, an adoption. So it really depends, I think, um, because those timelines are pretty set, just how long we could, it takes for us to create a new zone. I'm assuming that, yeah, it might go to the PDC once, could go twice. Um, I don't know how you see that being created, but that's probably the longest piece.
Thank you. Counselor Rich, do you have a comment?
Yeah, through the chair. I just, back to the utility corridor, um, I think the other thing is, is we have to think fifty years from now. So fifty years from ago, there were no ARC studies. These things didn't exist. And I think we have to be very careful and 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 to Pam's point, or Counselor Beach, um, we don't know what the future holds. No one will be in this room. No one will be on Snort. And and putting paperwork in place, saying, hey, this may be a thing that we want to use in the future or that the First Nations may want to use. I think that's forward-thinking and I think that's looking after things. And I honestly think that's one of the reasons why we are here today is because there wasn't a whole lot of looking forward. So I think we really do need to do this right. I'm a hundred percent for this. We got to put our ducks in a row. And and asking to say, hey, instead of going back and then asking afterwards is not the way, let's set ourselves up for success. Um, and and there's a way to do it. We've got Nicole who's super strong. Um, you know, and I, again, I mean, I I know that we meet, we meet to meet. Um, but maybe we do have to put in an extra meeting or two to get stuff done. And I think, I I'm not going to speak for anyone else in this room, but for me, I would absolutely, um, come to some emergency meetings and and do a vote and stuff like that to get this, this going.
So to that point, again, um, the utilities are already allowed. So it doesn't matter. It that it's not P three or transport. The utilities are already allowed. So, um, and it's on the radar. I think we've had a discussion with the CSRD already. So, um, go ahead, Bianca.
Um, I just want to make note, LA had a meeting with Tate and Enderby. They are also getting an easement. There's, I think, is for fire suppression reasons. They need to do some upgrading. Um, so far, they don't have an agreement in place, I believe, a formal agreement for theirs. Um, but you know, the rail trail group and everything has has to take it to their technical committees and all of that. So there is process that we would have to fa- to follow in order to get that put in place in the first place. Um, and if the reason is, like, our main reason is to support I R three.
Splatzen being one of the members of that ownership committee, I think, plays a big role in us getting that. So just just putting that out there.
Yeah.
That information that Enderby currently doesn't have one formally in place.
Thanks, Bianca, they would they would need to request it right now. No one's requesting this. So if IR three requested it, perhaps IR three would also, um, be involved in splitting all the costs on it as well. So I'll go ahead, um, Nicole, and then Pam.
Um, through the chair, I was just going to talk about a little bit about the stat right of way. Um, so yes, Enderby, it sounds like is still in process. And if that is something that we're going to hinge decision on for ten forty-four or creating a new zone, like, say, we're not going to do either of those, the stat right of way, um, process is going to take some time. Um, just just looking at how Enderby had on the process that they've gone through. I was like, their surveying required of the three parcels that we'd want to have a utility corridor over. Um, obviously, creation of the document and the negotiation with the ownership group of what the uh, conditions are in 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 the stat right away. Um, so not not a fast process.
Thank you, Council Bushel.
Yeah, through the chair, Nicole, if it takes, uh, six weeks to rezone, maybe six weeks, if we had to really push it to rezone, um, could we apply for our own temporary use permit? And allow them just to go ahead and and they have, you know, we have three years and we can extend it to six years. If it takes that long to do survey, is that doable? And how long would it take for a temporary use permit? And could we apply for ourselves by apply?
Through the chair, um, I would say that the process is probably the same. We have to do the public hearing and go through the same process essentially. Um, ah, if we could apply on on the ownership's group behalf, I do feel like they probably have to agree to it. Right now, we're doing the rezoning, I would say, on their behalf. Because when we did one thousand twenty twenty-two, um, they were zoned, it had a bunch of different zones in the one oh one nineteen ninety-three. And we, uh, were going to donate to P three, um, to better align with the rail trail. And then that was put on hold. And then that's why we're including it in ten forty-four with some other revisions. It was a little bit of a cleanup exercise. So applying for a T U P on their behalf, um, I don't know if we would do that for them. And if we did do that for them, I would say we'd have to have their agreement.
Thank you. I don't I don't know why we're trying to complicate this. I mean, everything that we need is in P three. It is basically a nature trail. We don't want to zone it to a highway or a train because Enderby is like that because they run through a city, right? They've got buildings right alongside their their trail. They've got highway crossing their trail. We're a nature path. So if there's things that we don't feel that are in P three, I mean, we can definitely revisit them after, but I think getting the rail trail started is probably key to our community. And then we sit down and sort through the details of the zoning. I think I think I think we're trying to make this really, really complicated when it could be, let's get moving and then let's sit down if council has a wish to do that and change the, um, uh, zoning. Sarah, go ahead. Uh, Council Beach, go ahead.
No, that's okay.
I. Council Bailey.
Yeah, I I don't. I think we're just trying to find a plausible path here. You know, basically, what I think this discussion is about is trying to get everybody seven votes. Yes, I think, you know, we actually are are boiling down to it. It's like, where is the comfort level of everybody? And that part of that is, we knew we knew this was a bit of an issue. This was a question mark around the zoning. So that's really what this discussion is about. I think, um, you know, we're talking about the zoning, but it's also getting people to the comfort level of voting yes. So I'm just trying to think this through, how we can do this without any further delays. And I don't have a a perfect solution, but maybe what it would would be is that we have simultaneous motion on the tenth, saying that we are going to go and take a look at the appropriate zoning after the fact. And that, you know, hopefully, everybody can commit to that as well at that meeting. Um, just spitballing here, right? Allow ten forty-four to proceed. Have that motion also at the same meeting that we're going to go back and we're going to make a commitment to rezone and look at it. And and then proceed on that basis. So that, you know, we are given the green light to the rail trail. There's clarity of purpose around that, that we'll know what we're doing. But we do recognize that there is an issue with the zoning or there's a there's is not a full comfort with it. Well, I'm I'm just, but just go with me here a little bit. I I don't think there's a full comfort level with it. Maybe that will be explained away later on, fine. But I'm just trying to say, here's here's the path forward and and we're we're making progress is really what I think we're all looking for.
Yeah, and I think I agree with you, Council Bailey. Let's just move this forward. And if we have to, even if we don't do the amendment that day, we need to move it forward. We need to have that conversation. We know that we want some tweaks or changes done to satisfy our community and our community needs. So I think that, um, I think that's a a a good compromise. Council Bushel.
Yeah, and I agree, it it has to go forward. It's just we'd be negligent not to follow our O C P and we'd be negligent not to to talk to our neighbor Splatzen before we we, uh, we talked about utilities. I mean, the channel is is the livelihood of the community. It has been forever. And, um, I mean, that part of the channel is very, very important and a statutory right of way for us to be able to service the channel in case of a flood or or a or a disaster. And and who knows, to provide hydrant, fighter hydrants and later on down the down the line? Just all kinds of service on that side of the channel. So, you know, I I do think we need to do a little bit of homework in it, but it has, you know, we have to get the rail trail going for sure.
Absolutely. Thank you, Council Bushel. And yes, I mean, but Splatzen needs to, they already know that we're we're coming through, like, we're building. If we pass this zoning, we're going through, we're going through IR three. And I think they recognize that we have services here that if they would like that, they can reach out and and request from us. And again, the utility, whether, um, it's park or, you know, or whatever, uh, transport, it the utility is still there. It's still accessible for us and we still have utilities there if we need them. Go ahead, Sarah.
Sorry, through the chair. Um, so just in reference to zoning by law one zero four four, Splatzen Title and Rights did provide a letter of support for the P three zoning for that shift from R one to our, sorry, from R one, one and two residential to P three park general. Um, in regards to the T U P, I don't know that there would ever be a case where, um, the district would apply on behalf of the property owner for a temporary use permit? Like, if we're thinking of a private property owner? Um, I don't think that's common practice. And I know through discussions of C S R D staff, which is just, you know, one part of the tripartite agreement of ownership group, um, that they would not be interested in a temporary use permit because they want to permanently build a trail and they're going to be investing funds in it. So for it to be a temporary use, um, likely wouldn't be something they would be interested in.
Okay, any more comments, Council Rich?
Yeah, through the chair, I mean, I guess my big question here is where is the compromise? How do we get there? Because I kind of feel like we're exactly where we were, um, on February fourteenth, where it is, you know, just do it. And 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 so there's been concerns and there's definitely been some answers today and we're moving forward. And I kind of feel like, you know, um, Council Bushel is 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 looking for some compromises in how we get this to when we're sitting down on April tenth, that there's seven people putting their hands in the air. Um, but that may take some compromise on this table, that 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 it isn't just do it this way. Maybe we have to do some creative thinking. Maybe we have to change stuff. Maybe we've got to come to some extra meetings. And I think that's really important that this council does that for our community. That that's our job, you know, and it's very important that that this happens. But that may take some compromise at this table. Um, you know, and I mean, honestly, I appreciate Gord, like, he does a lot of homework. Um, but we need to maybe think outside the box. We've we've talked about the theory, we've talked about thinking outside the box there. So I I just, you know, there needs to be compromise on everybody's sides here to get this vote through. It's really important we do.
Absolutely agree, Council Rich. And I think that you're right, absolutely part of this, um, this only should be, uh, public hearing. It would it would be public hearing again. So but I think that for us to sit down and truly look at what we want, though we need to move forward, get it going. And then we sit down again and look at what the community needs. So, okay, okay, go ahead, Council Bailey, we're gonna.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's definitely a possibility. I'd like it not to be divisive, though. Like, so when we're discussing all this, everyone's also kind of agreeing that this would be the next step, right? I and that's, I guess, the the little sticking point here, right? That, um, just because of the timing. But I mean, if if we were just to go back into a rezoning and it's going to be a whole divisive thing again on, you know, does this get become a transportation quarter? Then I don't know if that's particularly good for the community either, right? So I think everyone here is, you know, the message is the same from everybody that I'm hearing is rail trails got to get it going. And, uh, there's, 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 I see seven votes around or potentially seven votes around the table. How do we achieve that? And that's what we're trying to thrash out here. So yeah, I that's more of a statement than anything else.
Thanks, Council Bailey. All right. I guess we can move on. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go to, uh, mayor and council reports. And then we're going to open it up for public input. So we'll try and do this quickly, Phil, because you've been sitting patiently and maybe there's a question or two for you. Uh, Council Evans, do you want to go ahead?
I just grateful for all the many conversations about the rail trail and different things that we're doing. And I, uh, compliment Sheila and the team by organizing last night. And, uh, I thank everybody for their diligent work and thank you, Gord, for day and and the research and I like the Bible, so good job there.
Thank you. Council Rich.
Was that catch up with the council last night? Again, shout out chamber, people of Sicamous. Um, I'm going to miss someone here, but everybody, it was a great night, councillors that showed up and the Legion. Um, did a training session with our group, that was good, listened in on the planning. Um, I have been trying to, at every meeting, shout out to some of our youth. So, um, salmon arm figure skating, which holds one day a week here in Sicamous with our Sicamous kids on the our ice. Uh, um, at the arena, we had our first skating show in twenty years in Sicamous last weekend and we had over two hundred people show up. Massive, absolutely amazing. So just shout out to the organizers, to the folks at the rink and to the kids who did an awesome job. And my next shout out is, we also had, um, three women from our town, Kayla Jeffrey, Shyla and Emma, uh, who are part of the North Okanagan under nine, uh, under eighteen, uh, female hockey for the provincials and we came in fourth. So that again, you got this little town that can, like, we just rock. And then my last thing is, I need everybody, twenty ninth, thirtieth, you can vote a million times. Hockeyville is, um, Enderby, which is one of our neighbors, which we all know. Their arena, um, is closed right now due to some big chiller problems and they need a lot of money. They've made it for number, they're four out of all of Canada. That vote is open, um, for two days straight and you could literally just sit there and go online or at two AM when you can't sleep or whatever. Uh, please vote for, um, our our neighbor Enderby. Uh, they need the money, we got to get their rain up and running for them.
Thanks, Council Rich. Council Bushel.
Through the chair, hard to follow. Um, I've been a little bit busy out of town, uh, been busy with work. But, um, uh, yeah, I attended the Brett O'Gino, our fire chief's, uh, retirement party after twenty eight years with the district. I think it is, uh, Brett's been a great ambassador for our fire department and has done a very good job over the years with all the, you know, the fires and the floods and all that. So, uh, yeah, I thanked Brett on behalf of mayor and council and, uh, we had a great time that night. And then also, uh, catch up with the council last night was very informative. Uh, learned lots from different folks and heard lots of questions and concerns and planning and development. I've, uh, had a meeting on the twentieth, that went really well. Um, we've had a lot of interest in our community for developers, so good to hear. And, uh, yeah, that's about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Bushel. Council Bailey. I'm tricking you. Council Bailey.
All right, um, well, this will be really quick. Spending a lot of time on the rail trail and I I do want to say I appreciate everybody I've talked to yesterday, the weeks before, all of the different, you know, perspectives on it. Um, I'd say over the weeks, there's been a lot of great information that's come forward. You know, today's presentation, very helpful, but there's been pieces we've been putting together for the last four weeks that we didn't know. And and M O T I is becoming clearer. There's just a lot of stuff that I know this process has been painful for folks, but there has been things that have come out of it. Excuse me, I'm not, I'm not choking up, I'm just flumming, but, um.
Cheering up.
No, 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 I I know, but I do want to say, like, we're we're a small town, right? And and everybody knows each other. And and ultimately, at the end of the day, everybody wants the best for this town, right? We're going to disagree on some of those items, but I think what everyone should agree on is that everybody has ultimately the best for Sicamous in in mind. And and that's what I've taken away from the process and I've taken away from a lot of conversations that I had with people. Certainly a lot of passion. Sometimes in Sicamous, we like to shoot first, ask questions later, you know? And that's that's part of our feisty nature, I think. But, um, that's been a good good process. The other thing is, um, I think last night was something we should do more of. Uh, I think that was a good engagement period without being in a meeting because a meeting is structured. It's hard to come and ask us questions in a forum like this, but there you you have a a real dialogue. So I want to say thanks for the chamber and, uh, yeah, planning and development, good meetings. And and I want to have a big shout out for Nicole. She's done an awesome job these last several months. Uh, she 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 now has somebody up in her office there as well. So, uh, but I I really want to say thank you for all your stick handling on a lot of big files, so thanks.
Council Bailey.
Council Beach. Don't forget any. Um, yeah, so just echoing how everybody else is also feeling about, you know, it has been hectic. It's been really, really busy and a little bit controversial and, you know, um, but I what I really love is the passion. I love the passion of this community and I love the passion of this council. We're all really committed. Um, so for 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 me, um, I have been working on, uh, community education, uh, that is not here. Siobhan and I have been working together on on, uh, safety and health for youth and community and families. So that's coming up in the next two months. Um, and so look for that. Um, uh, attending, uh, the Shushat watershed, I sit on the Shushat watershed shed. So I, um, sat in on that and, um, basically, they they're doing a rethink because I think you, many of you will know that the uh, that their referendum turned down their 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 possibility at being sort of funded by tax this time. And so trying to figure out where the where all the funding is going to come to keep all of the programs going is like huge. That was the discussion. It was a huge one, but it was it was really positive. So, you know, getting the regional districts more involved on either end of us is definitely was part of the solution and maybe starting to reach out to municipalities to have more of that. So so good solutions came out of that. Then interagency, always attend interagency, uh, once a month. Um, and that's always a good collection of input from all sorts of, um, social services, uh, in the area, in the whole area and programs. Um, catch up with council. Well, I just want to say we're going to really miss Brett O'Gino. I I didn't make his retirement party, but Brett Brett has just been a leader for so long here. And it's hard to imagine the fire department without him, actually. But, um, cat catch up with council was great and thank you to the the community for coming out. And I'm I'm with the I'm with everybody in terms of the kind of, we need more of those. Like, I like the dialogue. So, um, yeah, and and enjoyed having the training session with council too, I think. I think that, that's, that's stuff that's really helpful going forward, so, yeah, thank you.
Counsel Beach, I'm gonna be really quick, I've been uh, out of town and then back in town, and unfortunately, I couldn't make last night, so that's why we, you know, went to uh, um, breakfast with the mayor, which is just gonna be postponed for a little bit. Um, but um, yes, I'm glad that last night turned out great, it was, it was, I'm getting great feedback, it's great to see the community come out. I was at a C S R D board meeting last week, um, met with um, the Shushawat Community Foundation yesterday, Dr. uh, Director, Dr. Martin, Director Martin and I, um, and I've got some information, Pam, that might be just helpful for you as well. I um, want to give a shout out to Nicole as well, thank you for, you know what, thanks for just stepping in and doing a great job. And I want to welcome June, and June is doing a great job as well, so thank you very much, and welcome to Sycamouss, and, you know, welcome to the team. Um, yeah, shout out to uh, Brett, our fire chief, who has been here forever, and um, um, yeah, we're going to miss him, and he's done a great job and, and uh, um, has uh, contributed a lot to our community, so, and welcome to our new fire chief, uh, Chief Lorenzo D., sorry, thing? Thank you, welcome to uh, Lorenzo, to the new chief. Um, also, I have, um, as some of you know, um, we have been dealing with some, um, a bit of bullying and harassment in, in the community, so uh, we are going to issue a press release, we had a couple of councilors that have gone down to uh, R C M P and, and um, our concerns, so there will be a, a immediate relea-, a statement immediately released. Um, I'd like to express concern for members of council and community who have been threatened or bullied for voicing their views about the Shushawat North Okanagan Rail Trail. As with council, there are different opinions in the community about the rezoning, the rezoning decision, the project itself, and the potential impact on Sycamouss. We are fortunate to live in a society where we can express those different views freely. Being able to debate with others about the issues are very important to us, and part of what makes us us. Causing harm to those whose views don't allow, align with ours is not acceptable. Today, Sycamouss R C M P Sergeant Murray McNeil gave a presentation to council about complaints of cyberbullying, harassment, and threats related to the rail trail decision and polarization and divisiveness in the community. No one deserves to be intimidated or threatened for their personal views. We can be passionate, and we can disagree, but please, let's be respectful of our neighbors and fellow community members. Remember, we all love Sycamouss, we all want our community to be safe. If you're being harassed or threatened, and fear for your safety, or the safety of those you know, please contact the Sycamouss R C M P detachment at two five zero eight three six twenty eight seventy eight to report the incident. If you're experiencing cyberbullying, please report the incident to the social media site. These sites typically have policies against abuse, and anyone in violation will be notified and prevented from using the site. If you have concerns or questions for council, please share them with us, we serve the public and are always welcome, and always welcome hearing from you. There are several ways to engage with council. Our meetings include a fifteen minute public hearing period to address council and committee members, and we welcome correspondence and presentations from the public. Thank you, that will be released um, today or to- tomorrow, that will be released tomorrow. It's already been released, that you're quick, you're sitting here. Anyway, uh, so that's it, we're gonna go into uh, public input, we're gonna give it fifteen minutes, so at four thirty, we um, are going to be over, so make it, keep your, your questions, if you have any, on point, and uh, short and sweet, so let's start, uh, pardon? I'm gonna get folks to step up to the podium as well, so go ahead, step up to the podium, state your name.
Dear Mayor and Council, my name's Jeanette Love, and thank you for having me here again today. I just, Phil, I just want to clarify some things, I want to make sure I understood it. The, the funding is not contingent on a rezoning, it's based on starting construction. Is that correct? Did I hear that right?
Yeah, please.
Um, yeah, Mayor Anderson, as, as we said, the funding is tied to the construction, so that's, that's what the funding is for.
Okay.
And like any construction in any property, it has to be the zoning of the jurisdiction to get constructions.
So, and, thank you. And there's no plans currently for parking, for access, for washrooms, um, along that portion of the trail in Sycamouss. So, and it's not open to the public either, so it won't be open until it's safe, is my understanding as well, if I heard that right?
That's correct.
The demand of our council and staff is, why can't uh, the rail trail go in with a skid steer? I saw an excavator on our lot there along the rail trail there. Why can't you go in and move gravel? Why can't, why is it all contingent on getting this rezoning through? And I applaud council as well to get it done right the first time. Look how long it's taken you to, it's been over six years that C S R D and R D and R purchased this property, and we're still at this point. So I'm asking you, what is preventing the owners right now from bringing in gravel and building up that foot that is required? Why is it so contingent on, or why is it continued on rezoning? Let me ask.
So, because right now, in the Sycamouss section, it's not zoned for a rail trail, it's zoned residential.
But it's not going to be open, remember? They're not opening it, this is just public property owners doing landscaping, is what it is, because there's no washrooms, there's been no discussion about signage, no parking, no access, no ferry or the bridge or whatever. So why, why can't a property owner with the current zoning go in and start construction and get the funding?
I think it's because it's a regional government, I mean, and I'm not going to get into this conversation, because I really don't know the answer between a district and a regional government that owns a piece of property, so I don't want to give you the wrong answer, but I can get Sarah to take that down, and.
I think it's pretty hard, because everybody wants to move this ahead, so I'm asking, why is it being stopped? And I think everybody's asking that.
Um, a part of applying for your grant funding, especially provincially and federally, is that you're following all of the rules within the different municipalities that you're working in. So in this case, the C S R D and the ownership group will not go against our zoning, which is a bylaw, which is our rules, which is creating a path. It's not in our zoning. So a part of the grant funding, which um, I'm quite familiar with, that is a part of it, is legalities. So just like we're required to do our, our work and all those things, there's tick boxes you have to meet. So far, the C S R D has not met that box, therefore, they cannot start construction, which falls under their grant funding, therefore, anyways.
Thank you, Jeanette, Jeanette, I got three minutes for everyone.
But Phil, I want to ask you, what progress has been made in the thirty five kilometers of the A L R property, um, and the hundred and sixty seven property owners? What progress has been made on the A L R decision to get uh, uh, to resolve all the conflicts and the concerns that the folks down there? Because you talked about a trail going nowhere, well, Sycamouss is also a trail going nowhere, because it's not going to be open to the public till the bridge is, so, so you've got thirty five kilometers of pavement, I'd like to know the progress from the A L R.
No, Jeanette, thank you, this is rezoning in Sycamouss, this is, you can, you know what, contact Nord and, or contact Phil and uh.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you, okay, well, that's great. Anyone else? Anyone online?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, go to the podium, state your name, please.
Uh, thank you, everybody, my name's Ryan Keen, uh, live in Sycamouss, on the west side, actually. Just a couple of questions about the safe access and the trail being closed. Um, so the construction currently is starting at one point five and moving south from there, um, with no real plans of moving north as of right now, until the zoning thing is sorted out. Within the two years, when, when will it be open, and when it does open, where will the parking and safe access be?
Phil, do you want to go ahead?
For, sorry, the question's for Phil, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Counsel, I mean, that's essentially the conversation we just had, uh, maybe you probably weren't here for the presentation.
I was there the whole time.
So, yeah, so the answer, that's the answer, it's, that's getting worked on, it's, you know, you're right now, working on interim access points on this end, and that, and there's a number of options that are being looked at, and so, you know, the Sycamouss staffs or regional district staffers might seen, and, and are you to, to sort those pieces out. Um, and that's, that's the answer, so, so you, we, we can't actually fully answer that, but let's assume that we get this built, and then you do find an interim access, in the meantime, uh, the possibility of using this sooner than later is actually really good, right? Because pieces can be opened, like the, the test, the pilot section in Enderby has good access, and so it's, it's there, people can actually walk it, the community is really actually using it a lot, it's, it's getting used, so go over it, this is the next year, two years, you'll, you'll see stations open. None of that precludes getting the construction done, because there's many layers to get done, and it has to be built, otherwise, so you, you can't leave it, so we now already got all the things uh, figured out, um, otherwise you, you know, I mean, that. Um, when I say that upfront here, it's just expectations realistic, even if, you know, it's construction started now. Uh, usually the, the issue we see is that everyone's like, great, and they actually come out and start wanting to walk it even before it's, this point, you know, until that access and all that's sorted out, the, the regional partners are working. So, my focus is on, we've got this funding, let's get the pieces done that, that you can get done at this point, so.
Yeah, and the, and the reason why I asked the question, I know that you gave that answer a while ago, and some people have asked the same question multiple times, but it just seems crazy to me that, like, if I was to start a boat rental company, and I planned on having one hundred boats on the water, but I literally had no access to get to the water, but at least I bought all the boats, and I have the fleet and the staff to run it all, but nobody can actually get there? Doesn't make any sense. Like, I don't understand, it's kind of like putting the cart before the horse, it doesn't make sense.
Go ahead, Phil.
Mayor, I can answer that. If you look at the development plan, Sycamouss is the trailhead, the access has been set out, the, a ramp branch line is developed, there will be separated bicycle pedestrian pathway, it will come down and connect, so that's, that's the access solution that's been, been identified, right? Finding the interim, uh, potential trailhead is a result of the delays to the front bridge development, but those are all, that's all part of this kind of infrastructure planning. Um, so that actually is what has been planned for, and it's been planned for a long time. The development plan was on the website, it was approved by the regional government, Sycamouss concluded uh, January twenty twenty, so it's been there, and you can take a look at it. At the time, if you look at their original plans at the time, we'd been talking to M O T I, saying in the interim, is it possible that they would allow us to have a little staging part near Red Exometer Zero, because we didn't even know at what point the bridge would be built. Um, but then they came forward and said, we're, we're starting now, and so suddenly the planning, that suddenly became, allowed that to become part of, um, and those, you know, there was all those pieces, but the plan is.
Yep, for sure.
You guys have, have you guys had any formal discussions with Mary Hills Golf Course about potentially using their area as parking space to access three point five?
Yeah, go ahead, um, and then we're gonna have to move on.
You know, uh, Mary Hills is fully aware of the development, because they're one of the adjacent property owners, and so I know the rail trail owners have, have met, and, you know, they've got a processing, they have to sort out as well. If uh, Mary Hills and any other uh, product, adjacent property owner wanted to take advantage of exactly this, and kind of what you're flagging is, hey, this is actually a great opportunity for resorts, for communities, uh, then there's an opportunity for them to do that. So I don't know if they're, they're going to do that or not, but there, there again is another example of one of the players who potentially could come up with some interim access options in the meantime.
Sure, thanks, Phil.
Um, and time just for like.
Kate, another, one quick one, and then, because it's, we want to move on.
I'm gonna leave with this, um, I, I, there is definitely, without a question, it's not a feeling, it's fact that there's been quite a bit of division over the last few months and weeks over this whole rail trail thing, and also some, well, I don't know if they're threatened, but bullying and stuff online, and it seems to be all pretty one-sided, that there's one side of the, of the whole issue that is being blamed for the rail trail not starting in Sycamouss, the dock owners are getting blamed, and four councilors are getting blamed, and that's really troublesome and worrisome, considering they have the best interests of the community in mind, they're not making self decisions, they're doing this for the community members, and for the future and the betterment of our community. And so, um, I just, I hope that us as community, community members can stop kind of, um, you know, going on a hunt after the ones that are stopping the trail, because they're not, like, why are they the only ones that have to compromise? It's like P three or the highway, right? Parks only, and then we'll start the construction, it doesn't make any sense. There's got to be another way, so that all seven people will put their hands up and say yes, and be confident, and come to an agreement together, so that the dock owners are happy, the rail trail owners are happy, the community's happy, and the councilors are happy.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, anybody else? Yeah, go ahead.
All right, just like to say that it was not just one side, because my wife uh, has been nailed by a few of the west side guys, too, so, uh, I get a little bit upset about that yourself, but, uh, I just wanted to thank you, Phil, for coming, and for some of you councilors who have argued that you haven't had the information, especially the I R three piece. You know, as soon as the February fourteenth um, meeting happened, you know, we connected with Phil, and Slatzine, Michael, and John, C S R D, we, they got back with us within a day, not even, um, and we've had all this information. Um, and we're, and, and there, like, there's a lot of the information easily accessible from the people that were actually doing the project. So, for councilors, I think we've had access to the information, and so I just want to say that, just to respond to the other side, um, you know, my wife's put her whole life on to this, so it's been extremely emotional for her, um, so it's not just one side.
Okay, thank you, and we are at our time, we are going to call this meeting, we're gonna close this meeting today at uh, four twenty seven. I'd like to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting, can I have a mover? Counsel Bailey, Counsel Rich, all in favor? Thank you guys very much, thank you all for being here today.